Going to call tonight's meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Planning Board. And we are March 23rd, 2021, sorry. I'm just reading ahead. And just so we know, consistent with the governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and becoming gathered and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, we need to change that, I believe. Susan, if you could look into that with Sherri, just to make sure that's accurate for the next meeting. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and/or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number. And if you are attending this meeting, I'd like you to go on to mute. You're welcome to share your camera. If you do have a speaking part and you're not on the planning board, please state your name and your address before you start speaking. That will help us keep a record. Thanks. Tonight's agenda is in front of us, called to order, which we did. And I'd like to see just a roll call in attendance. Matt Lowry.
President.
Thank you. Joanne Schooler.
Here.
And let's see, Megan Menasali.
Present.
Excellent, thanks. And for the record, Erin Kokinda is here. And I didn't see if Jonathan Chines is here or not. All right, that's okay, Susan, if you could look at that, I've lost my Zoom menu. Hmm. Let me maximize and see if it comes back. Nope. All right. Well, we will not be using the chat this evening, so please don't add anything to the chat. We'll not be responding as soon as I get a chance, I'll be disabling it if I can find the menu. Oh, it just popped up again. It's like magic. Let's see. Participants. Excellent, so item number two on tonight's agenda, approval of meeting minutes from March 9th, 2021. I hope everybody got a chance to review and read. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 9th, 2021 meeting minutes as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, I need a roll call vote, so Matt.
Yes.
You made the motion, yeah. Megan, I believe you're second.
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Okay. And I also accept the meeting minutes, thank you. Item number three on tonight's agenda, 291 Salem Street, as-built certified certificate of occupancy. So Attorney McGrail, if you'd like to, I don't know, do you want to share the screen? Do you want to discuss? How do you want to do this?
I think I can start with a discussion, to give a little kind of background to the board.
Okay.
If I may, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing Delgin, DeMann, and Kamaljet Cower, who are the owners of property. They are both on at the Zoom hearing tonight on the screen. Also with us is Paul Finocchio, who is their site surveyor. This involves the properties at 291 Salem Street, originally known as 291, I think now. I think Susan Hall, because she helps me keep track of the numbers, I think it's 289 and 291. To refresh the board's memory, this was a little two-lot subdivision on Salem Street, and two houses have been built. We were before the board not too long ago, before the winter hit, and we contemplated doing some pretty significant modifications to the topography and some of the amenities on the property. And we had discussions with the board. We also had some discussions with the zoning board on that. And then after contemplating this, we decided that they were not going to do the significant modifications that they had talked about with the topography, which the board had actually reserved the right in the decision to allow for that possibility. So instead, what they did is they went back to the, to work on the ground with Paul, and they hired Jack Sullivan, who was a site civil engineer, to build the plan in substantial conformance with, as was approved by your board and the Board of Appeals. They believe they have accomplished that on the front lot. And they've come pretty close in the real lot. In the real lot, they are going to be submitting a request for what they believe will be minor modifications to some of the topography behind the house out back. They've retained Mr. Sullivan to do a drainage study on that to show that there is no impact on anyone, including the neighbors, by the proposed changes. We will be submitting that to the town engineer tomorrow related to the back lot. We're really not here before you for that tonight, we'll be before you in the future on that. The reason we're here tonight is my clients have had this front house under agreement for quite some time to sell. The buyers have waited patiently. Paul has submitted an as-built plan, and we believe that the front lot now is in substantial compliance with what was required by your board and the Board of Appeals. We'll be before the Board of Appeals on this tomorrow night. And what we're requesting is that the board, your board, would acknowledge that and send a correspondence to the building inspector stating that you have no issue with certificate of occupancy for the front lot. However, we're acknowledging that the back lot behind the house is going to have some requested changes, that that would not be released for occupancy at this time. The way the decision, you know, technically requires that we submit an as-built plan, it really doesn't call for approval, but we think in the spirit of the decision, that's pretty much was what was contemplated, and that's why we're here. You know, we could have just submitted this to the building inspector and said, hey, you know, we comply with the front lot, we're entitled to our certificate, certificate of occupancy. But we didn't want to do that because we've had discussions with your board on this before. We are going to be back on the back lot for some changes. So we really just thought it would be appropriate to let you know what we're trying to do and hopefully get your blessing in that regard, that Paul is here to answer any questions. But again, the front lot is in what we believe substantial compliance to what was required. They would like to get the CO so they can sell that lot. People have been waiting to close on it for some time. And then we believe that we'll be back at your next meeting, asking for modifications behind the real lot, which were much, much smaller than what we had discussed before. And we'd also have to go to the Board of Appeals on that. And again, that's within your jurisdiction to either approve or not approve. If you don't, then they'll have to build it according to the plan, just like they have with the front lot. So I don't know if that explains it, why we're here, Mr. Chair, but we're really asking for your blessing just on the front lot at this point.
Right.
It's submitted as-built plan, so Paul is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Understood, and I'm glad you explained because I took a drive out there the other day just to check it out when it was wet and damp and a little drizzly, just to see what was going on. And obviously, there's still machinery and work going on for the back lot. I can't remember, in my experience with the board, I don't remember us looking at a subdivision like this and acknowledging one lot, one part of it being done, because it works as a system. So I'm a little concerned because when we approved this or endorsed it, we looked at how the drainage works for the whole lot. To me, it would be difficult for us to say, okay, this lot's ready to go, knowing that the drainage and the high point in the back right of the lot is coming down towards the front, going around each of the dwellings, I believe. I'm just having a hard time, and I'd like to hear from Matt, or do we want to go to Mr. Finocchio first?
If I could just add to that, Mr. Chair, I understand what you're saying, or if I could respond to it, I understand what you're saying. But again, your board, you know, has the right and is reserving the right to require the back lot to be built in accordance with the plan 100%. And if your board did, so, so there's really no risk, because if, if you said, you know, when we come back with the back lot, if you say, well, you know, you've got to build it exactly to plan, we'll have to, we acknowledge that. We don't think you're going to find that way based on the drainage study. We actually think there's an improvement for what's, for what.
I guess I have no experience with approving one lot with, you know, a letter to acknowledge to the building inspector that we feel comfortable with, I don't know, I guess, releasing or letting you know that, that we're okay with it. But it works as a system, so I don't quite understand that, how can we approve one part of a complete subdivision that the drainage is all tied in together? So I guess that's my.
The front lot is completed according to plan.
So no drainage is coming from the work that's being done on the back lot that will interfere with the front lot at all?
So what we plan on doing is coming back and, and again, saying the front lot is built per plan, and we think these changes that we're proposing out back don't have any impact. You decide that. If they do, then we have to build it according to plan, so there wouldn't be any impact on the front lot, because everything then will be according to plan. It's not dissimilar that if there was surety on the, like, oftentimes you have surety on subdivisions with like a Form G, and you'll release certain lots.
Okay.
When they're ready to go, and you retain other lots.
Right.
So, you know, it's really at our, it's really at my client's peril, because, you know, we could, we could come back on the back lot, and potentially you could say, gee, too bad you didn't keep the front lot, because we'd let you do this out back, but you'd have to make some tweaks to the front, but you can't do it anymore. So now you've got to build it 100% according to plan out back. They're willing to take that risk, because.
That's a little too hypothetical for me. I'd love to hear from, to Matt, to see what he thinks about this, too.
Well, in most past circumstances, we're just releasing the roadway, we're not releasing the lot. This is a, is a different circumstance. I think we've had a couple of these. One of them's been on Nahant Street, but that was all completed at the same time, and it had less issues with drainage. But yes, usually we release the entire roadway at once, and then we really don't have much say on the lots, but because this was a, it's a subdivision, but it's basically a heavily modified subdivision that we retain some jurisdiction over the drainage for both lots on this.
Any other planning, any planning board members have any questions or comments for Attorney McGrail and Mr. Finocchio?
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, the little lake area in the front, on the front lot, I took a look at it after it had rained significantly, and it looks like, like a little pond there to the left of the lot. And I know last time we talked about this, there were concerns about the drainage and where that was going to go. Where is it draining to? Is there any impact on the neighbors? And what happens in those situations where there's a heavy rainfall and it fills up? Is it draining?
Attorney McGrail or Mr. Finocchio, is that something that you can answer?
Yeah, I think so. Based upon the proposed plan, the flood, 100-year flood elevation is like 90.7, which is approximately two feet, about a foot and a half, two feet below grade, so the punch should never fill up and overflow. And I believe even in the report from Jack Sullivan shows that the 100-year event is still roughly around that same elevation, based upon the as-built conditions. So that detention area is designed to handle the 100-year event.
To answer Ms. Schooler's, you know, question further, is this subdivision was intensively designed before the board, before you were on the board, and with review of the town engineer? So that, that detention basin that you're seeing is, was designed to hold water and not impact anybody. And, and the fact that you're seeing water in it means it's working. I mean, that's, that's what it's designed to do.
Thank you. Just, just to help everyone, I do have the plan here, I believe, and here's Salem Street. Can you all see this?
Can you rotate it, Bill?
I should be able to.
Thank you.
Okay, it did go the right way. Sometimes it goes the other way, it's like, what's going on? I guess it's easier to look at this lot, because it does have contours and stuff. Salem Street along here, the drive going in, the first dwelling, and the dwelling here in the back. Here's that retention pond, Joanne, that you're speaking of, correct?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're clear and talking about the same piece. Attorney McGrail, so just to clarify what you're asking of our board this evening, we would send a correspondence, an email to the building inspector, if our board agrees that we acknowledge that our board is satisfied with the road in, in the dwelling in the first or front of this property.
Correct. That it, that it, that you're okay with issuing, him issuing a CO on that, because it's been, everything that's required to be done on Lot 1 pursuant to the plans has been substantially completed.
I'm just trying to make my way over to the other one. Okay.
Yeah, that's a, that's a better, that's a better plan to kind of.
Yeah, I was looking at that just to see if it's easier to, to view.
Like even that, even that drainage basin is actually on Lot 2, you know?
Okay.
It's not on Lot 1.
That's what I wanted to see, and here's the, the line, right? The lot, the.
There's not a lot happening on Lot 1 here.
Okay.
And, you know, and that's why it's really been tied into Lot 2, which still has, you know, work slash modifications to happen on it. And, you know, and there's some people that have been kind of put out that they can't close, and it's certainly not the board's fault.
No, this is.
That lies on my client, so, you know, but it is a circumstance that we're trying to get some help for, help here.
Well, this is good, because when this showed up on the agenda, and I drove out there, and I'm just like, what is he thinking? Because this is not close to done, there's, there's a lot of work to do in the back of that back dwelling. So it's good to hear that we're just talking about the front lot. I feel more comfortable now that we're looking at the map, and we've had a little discussion about what's going on. Again, I'm just not as familiar with sending this correspondence to the building inspector that we're acknowledging that it's okay. So I just want to make sure we word it correctly and that the board agrees with this before we move forward. So I would expect that we would need to vote on this as a board if we're sending a correspondence to the building inspector, to see if we're in agreement with this. Matt, you concur with that?
If we were to that point, I would, but.
I just want to set like what we need to do this evening, if we're going to acknowledge this as we're satisfied with it.
Well, my big question is, when is it going to be completed? Even the front lot? I mean, obviously, you go out there, you know it's not done yet. The walkway's ripped up, there's, there's no loam and seed put down yet, the final grading isn't done. So I'm a little hesitant to release it at this point, because it's still under construction. There's piles of fill out there, where on this plan, it's showing as-built grades, but yet there, there are piles out there. So I'm, how, how can you show an as-built grade if you still have fill out there? I'm trying to figure out how you can show an as-built plan.
Can I jump in and say something?
But then, but then you still have fill piles out there, so it's, either the plan, you know, there's two options here. The plan was done in phases, and one section was as-built, and then the fill was moved to another one, or the fill was taken off-site and then brought back on. So I'm a little perplexed as to what's going on out here.
Thanks, Matt. I'm sorry, did somebody want to speak?
Yeah, this is Daljinder, man. I just like to add something real quick.
And then you can say your address, sorry.
Absolutely. 14 Tuskamore Terrace.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so basically, the fill came out of the back lot, and then, you know, we also, we had brought in some loam. So the fill that you see there, that's sitting on basically Lot 2, that's actually a loam that was actually frozen when we were trying to do, do the work. So that's the reason why we couldn't get rid of it, but we are basically, my skipper is back there to, actually, day after tomorrow, so we'll get rid of that by Friday. And then the driveway that you mentioned, Matt, so that, that would be done on Friday as well.
Do we, I have a suggestion, if we, I know as, what would make me feel more comfortable is to visit the site when that work is complete. We don't have to wait to the next meeting, but we could discuss amongst our board to see if it's something that myself or Matt or both of us, or I think two of us should go out, board members, that is, to look at the site, to qualify that that work has been completed to as-built or occupancy status. Does that sound like a good course of action, Matt?
Well, then, I mean, yeah, I would want this to be as-built before we're going to approve it, because right now, if anyone's been out there, you can tell that it's, it's still a construction site. It's not as-built, it's still in progress. So if you're going to put down loam and seed, you're going to change the grades out there. And we, once we release this, whatever they do out there, we have no control over anymore.
So when can, sorry, Matt.
Well, one, one of the issues I have, too, is, you know, some, some things have changed. One of the, to me, that deck that's off of 281, that's off of the right side, pan over to the other, if you can pan over to the other section, it'll be easier to see. Those steps originally were supposed to go head out towards the rear. They're now heading out towards the side. At the bottom of that step, there's a cut that goes down into that drainage swale. I know for a fact that that is not going to remain that way, because it's a tripping hazard to walk off of those steps. So I'm kind of, I'm curious to how that's going to be rectified at this point. And I don't know why, you know, this is not complete, and then before us.
Yeah, so, so as the loam is concerned, actually, we're not going to loam anything, it just needs to be raked. So the loam will be, basically, we just need to get rid of loam. So that's just extra stuff that's sitting there. We don't need to loam any of the area that's already been done.
So you're going to keep a condition where you, you walk down those steps, and then you're stepping basically into a slope away from those steps? Is that, is that what you're saying?
I believe once it's raked, Matt, it should be good, but again, I'll definitely, you know, I'm open to any sort of discussion. I mean, if you feel that it's steps, I mean, we'll change the steps, that's no problem.
I mean, unfortunately, it's my own fault. I took a bunch of pictures out there, I didn't download them to show what's going on, but I, I'm not, at this point, I'm not ready to release this.
So Matt, could we, maybe we could wait to hear from Attorney McGrail when this work is completed, and two of us could go out to take a look and report back to the board, and then we could expedite the letter.
Well, we need to vote on this, so.
I'm just looking again for what's the course of action, where we can not have to wait two weeks, sorry, to the next meeting if they're going to complete this work this week.
But what, I guess the question is like, why do we need to expedite the letter? Why, what is, like, why can't we wait two weeks?
Well, we could wait till the next meeting, I guess that's fine. I'm just looking for a way to service the people that are in front of the board, and if they're close to completion, and it's going to take this week for them to complete it, we could go out. I think regardless of we wait to the next meeting, we're still going to have to have one or two of us go out there and look at it to just confirm with the board that this work is complete.
Yeah, I agree. I would feel more comfortable, one, knowing that the work that needs to get done is complete, and two, having members of the board go out to review the site and come back to the board, either showing photos or a report of some sort, right, of, of explaining that the work's been completed and satisfactory to the board's needs, right, and presenting that, and then I would feel comfortable, more comfortable voting on it as a, as a board to move forward.
Okay, good point. And I guess when I use the word expedite, I mean just to complete it, whether it happens the end of this week as a site visit or the end of next week. I'm trying to find out when the work is going to be completed, so we can schedule in our, for us to go out before we meet next.
Well, Bill, the, the only way we can approve this prior to our next meeting is if we had a special meeting, because the entire board needs to vote on it.
That's not going to happen. I don't, I guess I don't see it happening. I shouldn't be so defined, definite about that, but I don't see it having a special meeting between now and the next.
Yeah, so, so the other option is we have a vote now, or we wait until next week, or our next meeting. I think if we have a vote now, I know how I'm going to vote, so, you know, that's, you know, we can do it however we want to, however you want to do it.
That's a good conversation. Joanne, do you have anything to add?
Yeah. In terms of the stairs from the deck, you mentioned they were going to be on the back side of the deck there. Why were they moved to the side? Was it the drainage on the back, or can you just not have any stairs?
Cool. Is that a question that can be answered, Attorney McGrail, or, sorry?
I think my client could probably answer that better than me, since I didn't.
Absolutely. So initially, it was actually supposed to be on a, on a side. So, right there, yep. And then it was moved to the back, because there is two fans, you know, for the AC and then the heat, that, that's actually sitting right there. So that space was a little tight.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's an issue with it being on the, the side as well. If that's not resolved, can you remove them? Will you remove them, or what do you, what do you want to do if there's still a problem there?
Well, maybe, Paul, can you, Paul, are you there?
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, from a layman's perspective, you, it doesn't look to me like they go right into the swale. How much space is there?
There's a few feet, you're talking about nine inches, seven to eight inches to nine inches difference between the step and the contour of the, right in there, yep.
Seven to nine inches, that doesn't seem like very much.
Elevation change from the stairs to that contour.
I guess that's something we'd get a better feel for if we saw that.
I think the concern, and Matt, correct me if this wasn't your intent, is that when you take a step off those stairs, you want a three feet of flat before it starts to slope away, so whoever's taking that last step can get their, their balance before continuing. And if you push that swale out a little further, it could possibly push the water out into the property next door, and that becomes a concern.
Well, I don't, I don't want to engineer this thing right here.
Right.
What I want is it completed, so we can see what, what an as-built of this site's going to look like. I know that if I own that house, what I would do, I would flatten it out, and one of the problems is, once we release this and people move in there, they're going to do whatever they want. Because, you know, unless this is built according to plan, or the plan's modified, there's nothing we can do about it. Hopefully, the ZBA would do something about it, because they also hold jurisdiction over this. But this is kind of a unique situation, where once the, the planning board releases it, we have no say over it, and it's out of our control. And since the site's not complete, they could fill it all back in the way it was before, and, you know, that's it. So, and, and let's not focus just on those steps, but there's, you know, there's other issues out there, too, like the walk's not completed, there's supposed to be a drain between the walk, you know, under the walk. It's actually closer to the street than where it is. I don't think it ties in to that drain that is. to that drain that is, uh, in that stone area there. So, uh, you know, I, I, until it's done, it's hard to really comment on.
So back to the original, um, question, when will this work be done so we can go visit the site?
So the work will be done Friday.
Okay. So if it's done Friday, we can send two of our members out to report back to our board. And then at our next meeting, we can make a decision and vote on it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably the best course, Mr. Chair, um, after hearing everything tonight. And then, you know, I think at that meeting, we're also going to be here for the um, uh, revisions to lot two. So maybe the goal would be that, um, lot one potentially, I'll call it the front, lot one, the front lot, uh, potentially could be released by the board that night if you're satisfied. And then the, the board could also consider, um, the proposed modifications on the back lot that night too.
I think that's a good decision. I just wanted, yeah.
No, I think that's a, I think that's a fair plan. Appreciate your time.
A question on top of this, you mentioned you're in front of the ZBA tomorrow night. Are there any other boards that you're still in front of? Okay, good.
No, and we're going to, we're going to explain to them what's going on here too. And we'll explain to them the result of, you know, your, your concerns and, um, and, um, you know, where you guys are with this too.
Well, and depending on where you are on the agenda, I might be on there, um, observing as usual. We have a Vision twenty thirty meeting tomorrow night that we'll see how long that one goes.
We'll be on at the end, so.
That, that should work.
It will be great to have you on.
Well, I usually observe and not have my camera on and I just listen. I don't usually speak, but thank you. All right. Well, that's good. I think we have clear action on this. Um,
I mean, I think I'm going to say, if I can through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to say to my client, I think, uh, um, Gil and DJ, you know, we, we should look at those steps. Figure out what we're going to do with those steps.
And if I may, this is called once Gil. Regarding those steps, uh, I know there is a plan where Peter, uh, remind me his last name, um, the, um, architect. Yes, and he has submitted, uh, to the board, the way you see steps right here. And I will find that plan and, uh, perhaps, uh, we can correct that. And as well as, uh, uh, Matt, uh, or, uh, one of the other members brought uh, the point that, uh, the drain basin there to the left of the walkway is not connected to the drain. It is connected. We just need to, uh, the walkway is taken apart because the pipe had to go underneath. So like DJ mentioned, um, we are looking to complete all this Friday. Or early next week now that we are not going to be, uh, a decision won't be made till the next board meeting. So, but we should be ready for your visit, uh, next week, early next week.
Perfect. Well, the weather is in your favor.
All right, great.
Thanks. And once we hear from, um, Attorney McGrail, we'll have two, one or two board members go out to take some photos and check out what's there and report back to us. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So I, I have a couple of questions before we end this. So are you proposing a new plan for the back lot?
Uh, just some changes in the, in the back. Paul, if you want to talk about maybe, yeah, that's good, Matt. Maybe we can just have a little discussion on that. Paul, can you maybe just talk about what those changes are?
Paul, do you want to bring the plane back up?
Yeah, if you could, because that's just showing the light in the gray, what's existing and what's proposed, what was originally proposed.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to give you a little preview, so.
Do you prefer this map or the other one?
Yeah, no, that one's fine there because it shows the dark contours of what's existing out there. And the light gray contours of what was actually proposed on the, um, approved plans. So basically it's still an existing swale now that runs from the east to west. Loops around the back property line, then comes down along the westerly sideline. Um, that's, uh, before what happened was they had a wall that ran around the back and everything was pitched to the rear property line. So it all basically flowed onto the butter. So now what's happening is there's actually a swirl in here which collects the water and then runs it along the northerly boundary line down to the western, western boundary line out to that detention area out in front. And then the other part was, I think the patio area was, is now a deck. I'm not sure if that was approved or a modification, but it's a deck now instead of a patio.
That's the theory here.
Yeah, yes. Again, the changes in the, the walkway entering to the house coming off the driveway is, um, change is different from what was, um, initially approved. Up on the left rear corner of the house. The walkway. You can see the set of stairs and walkway coming into the house.
This one here?
No, 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 the left rear, the left rear.
Oh, in here.
Yeah, right there. Yes.
Right, and this steps up.
Yeah, that was initially approved, then what comes in. It's dark, it's tough to talk because there's a different, two different types of walls in there. The one with the angle point, it says top that one there, that's existing. And then the other one was proposed.
Right, because there's a, there's a wall and a railing that runs along here, correct?
Yeah, there's a wall that runs along, yeah, right through here.
Then meets grade like maybe about here?
That meets grade, no backup, we're, we're right there. Yep, that's the end of the wall.
I'm just flipping through pictures on my phone at the same time.
What we've done is, um, we submitted, we have a, a drainage report, um, a drainage study that was done by Jack Sullivan. Site civil engineer, um, that basically says that this works the same as it was going to work as proposed. We're submitting that to the town engineer, Mr. Renault tomorrow for his review. So I'm sure he'll make comment to the board in that regard at the next meeting as we regarding the backlog.
And it sounds like it from what Mr. Finocchio just described, it's a better solution than what was originally proposed, which is good. It would be nice to hear what, um, our engineer, um, that we're now has to say about it. Will, will you be corresponding with us on that, Brian, meaning forward us forward to our board?
The study?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
If you could send that to Susan so she could distribute, that would be awesome.
I will do that. What I'll do is I'll copy her on my correspondence to Mr. Renault.
That's perfect.
So, um, so this is the, so what we see out there is basically what you're proposing to do? This is the, the, the change?
Yes, that's what's out there right now, correct?
So.
That's what they'll submit in.
Is there any more work, but there's more work that needs to be done back there, right, Paul, or no?
Well, there's some grading there because it was done during the winter time, so they'd have to rake it out and clean it, got to seed it.
So you've got to go back out there one more time to make sure that it's in sync with what we've got here, right? Once it's.
Because it was done mid-winter.
One, one of the things that we're struggling with on this, on this guys a little bit is, um, that you know, they need to, you know, they need to go out and do the final grading, but in seeding, but they kind of don't want to do that until they know that this is going to be okay, right? Otherwise they'd have to rip that up and so I think what we're going to do is, is, um, Gil, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to kind of leave this as is a little bit until we can get back, you know, get that, get the feedback from both boards that we're good to go.
Uh, sure. I mean, on one hand, uh,
You can take the chance and do it, but.
Yeah, I'm hearing both sides. On one hand, uh, I think, uh, it should be finished and, uh, shouldn't be under construction. And on the other hand, uh, we are a little bit hesitant that if something gets rejected, then we have to redig everything. So so at this point, uh, I look for a recommendation, um, as far as grassing goes, uh, what should we do? Um, but the other stuff, uh, we already know what needs to be done. Um, I'm talking about both the front and the back, uh, that's what I suppose.
I think the board needs correspondence from the town engineer, um, to make sure he agrees with Mr. Sullivan. That would be my assumption before the board could.
Has the, uh, has the town engineer gone out and, and seen the site?
No, we're about to sit, submit him the revised report, Matt, so he probably will.
All right, because I, I was out there. There, there's some things out there that kind of trouble me with, with that grading and back. Uh, you've got that field stone wall along the back, but you've actually cut down about a foot and a half below that. The stopes, the slopes aren't stabilized. At some point, they're going to, they're going to settle out. So I'm curious as to how are you going to stabilize those slopes at that, uh, rate you have out there? I, I was kind of hoping, and we had discussed this before, that you're going to bring proposed plans to us before, before you, you went out there and did some work because I, I, I just, it looks like a mess out there. And I don't see how you're going to get it to be in a condition where an owner moving in there is not going to alter it later. So, um, I, I'm really concerned on how that's going to happen. And there's some other issues out there. I'm not going to bring it up now, but I, I'm going to, I, I think, I, I will let you know that I'm a little a little disturbed that the site conditions out there, and they need to be corrected. Uh, and they need to be rectified fast. So I think, Brian, you know what I'm talking about now, so. Uh, this, before we go out there, I want to see this site improved.
Matt, should we also wait to hear back from the town engineer before we schedule a site visit, just to hear if, see if there's any comments or you think it's almost worth going out there with the town engineer?
I, I, I think he should go out there and take a look at it and, and decide for himself.
Okay.
If I could please be, um, part of that correspondence, I would appreciate it.
Thanks, Aaron. So Susan, if you could copy Aaron on Brian McGrail's message to our plans being sent to, um, town engineer.
This is Dowd in there. Can I, um, quickly ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, so what are some of the concerns, Matt? Um, I, I think if you just bring it up now, it would be very helpful because you know, a couple of guys come and then to get the work. We really like to know so that we can correct it. Because based on, you know, based on what we did, it was actually done according to the plan. Uh, but you know, again, we would love to know, uh, so this way we can get that.
Well, it, it, it was done to plan after it was not done to plan. So, I mean, this was not constructed per the plans that were approved. It was constructed and then, um, it's trying to be fixed at this point. So that's one of the issues. There's, I, if you really want to bring up everything, when you, when you look at the, um, the sloping for the, uh, detention pond, there's some washouts there. There's supposed to be, I, I looked for those, those pipes, those inverts running into the pond. I did not find them, but I did find a lot of washouts. So that slope for the, for the pond is not stabilized. And you can see that with water running down there, it's, it's, it's eroding the, uh, the slopes of that. That's going to continue to happen. As it is, it does look like you have the same amount of volume of that pond because the, the contours are moved in quite a bit. And even the bottom of the pond isn't, is, is higher than what was proposed. There, there is no, uh, hydraulic connection from that back swale to the pond right now. So that's one of the issues. It kind of indicates on the plan that there, there is, but when you're in the field, there's vegetation out there that clearly has not been disturbed. And the grading hasn't changed.
Sorry, interrupt, Matt. If, if you're not speaking, please mute. There's some background noise coming in. Thank you. Sorry, Matt, go ahead.
So, you know, there, there's a lot of issues out here that need to be corrected, you know, I'd rather not. You know.
Well, what we're going to do, what we're going to do is, what I'm going to do is, we're going to line up a, um, with Paul and with Jack Sullivan, we're going to line up the site visit with town engineer. That's what we're going to do.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and we'll let, we'll see what the town engineer has to say, right?
So, you know, if the town engineer is fine with, with the conditions out there, uh, I'll be fine with it. But if he hasn't seen it yet, I'm not going to comment on. Okay, I, I don't want to move forward with it.
Thanks, Matt. I think, um, just the planning board, just from a show of nodding, Joanne and Megan, do you both agree with mo- holding off on this until uh, the town engineer, um, Mr. Finocchio and the client is out at the site and figure out what's going on? And then we hear back from them before we even go out as a site visit? Okay, right. Attorney McGrail, is there anything else on two ninety-one Salem that you'd like to discuss?
No, if you could just put it on, I think your next meeting is actually three weeks out.
It is three weeks. That's why I was looking at the calendar and it's.
To put this back on the agenda for that night, we'd appreciate.
Yes, we're looking at April thirteenth, I believe.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Grill. Thank you, Mr. Finocchio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on tonight's agenda is Lovis Ave. Attorney McGrail, I believe that's you as well.
I don't know what Lovis Ave is on for. That's interesting.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I, I put it on, uh, I had a couple of questions on, uh, what's going on out there. Um, I, I see you're, you're in construction out there. Uh, you've done some clearing and grading and the drainage structures are on site? Do you know anything about that or? Okay.
You're on mute, Brian.
Sorry. All, alls I know is I've been in, uh, in land court more than I'd rather be, uh, getting everything recorded. You know what it's like, Matt, with registered land subdivisions. It's been, it's been an adventure, especially during COVID. So, uh, thankfully, um, today, all of the, uh, all of the covenants and everything went on record. So I was working with, um, the chair and town council mullin in an effort to get that done and we finally did. So but, um, as far as construction goes and work, I know my client's been in touch with the town engineer. I know that for fact. But that's, that's all I know really. I don't know anything else.
All right, because you know, one of the, the prime concern I, I had was, uh, is that there's a, a, a large quantity of fill next door that, um, I had hoped was going to be used on that site. So we wouldn't be trucking fill in and then trucking fell off of the site adjacent to it. And uh, when I see that site that's adjacent to it, nothing has gone on there. There's, there's no, no further blasting, no excavation. So when I see that your site is now under, under construction and you were supposed to get fill from them, I'm just, if you could check and see what the status is and, and how that's going to progress. Because that was one of my, one of my pet peeves here is, is why are we going to be trucking fill in and then trucking it off when it's right there and it could be mutually beneficial. So that, that's only reason why I put it on the agenda. So if you could look into that, I appreciate it.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McGrail. Thank you, Matt. As always, good to keep up on these projects. Item number five, board discussion, review of current zoning around the lake. Joanne and I got together and Aaron, Aaron also contributed to really pulling together what we think our goals would be and bring out up as a board discussion so we can have, um, more direction and focus. And we could decide and discuss tonight on how to move forward. And I hope you all got a chance to look at it. I can bring up whatever we need to look at, I could bring up, but I'd like to bring up first the, um, Discussion topics, okay? And I'll share my screen. I didn't hear anything back, so I'm assuming there were no, um you didn't find any. Grammatical errors or anything like that, spelling errors, I hope. It was, got pretty late pulling the rest of the information together. Can you all see the screen?
Yep.
Um and Joanne, please chime in, because I know this is, this is something that's dear to you. Um, we looked at this to figure out, you know, what's our purpose and possible outcomes, so I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to go through this. And then as a board, we can discuss whatever topics we need to, whether we go down the list or not, um that's fine. Um, like, what are we trying to do? Protect the lake, right, from overdevelopment? And we looked at a couple of words. Are we improving? Are we evolving? Are we enhancing? So we don't know what those are, so that that's a good discussion topic. But we came down to the basic side that we're trying to protect the lake, that's all. The next was preserve views and support open space, and and we thought of how does that work? Well, it's it's pedestrian use, so. Preserve the views and support open space. Keep safe the people enjoying the lake, and now we chuckled a little bit, like what what's the main point? It's like, well, people need to be safe or they're not going to enjoy the lake at all. Um and this, this thought, like, we thought about, like, how does DPW would need to be involved to help with this, and it's walking. Better lighting around the lake, um rest areas, like water fountains, a lot of things came up. That's there, and I know we had more of a discussion, but it was just adding from my notes what's in there. And the other part was controlling pollution, and that's on there only because our town engineer, um Bill Lornow, has a plan. And I've heard parts of the plan and a little bit of um. Retention, uh drainage retentions to keep phosphorus and other chemicals coming back into the lake from lawns and roads and everything else, so. I know there's stuff going on for that, so it would be good to think i- if that's part of it, that we do talk to Bill to see where he is. B, proposed zoning bylaw changes around the lake. If that's our goal, is to propose some type of zoning bylaw that helps with those. You know, what are we trying to do above that we just, I just mentioned? And all in all, this needs to support, I I truly think it needs to support a future master plan. So if A, I'm sorry, if B, we're proposing, our board is proposing zoning bylaw changes, that's great. I think as a board, we should discuss that and figure it out if that's the right course of action. But I truly feel, um and Aaron's gonna move forward with the master plan anyway, but I think if we. The more we could pull this information together, pieces of it, parts of it can be pulled out and help that effort. And and we should have a big part with this master plan. We should totally. Have a big part of this, okay? So before we move on to the information that we collected, does anybody have any comments or questions about? A, B, and C, like our purpose?
Can I just add something real quick?
Oh, please, yeah.
Yeah, no, um so going back to the master plan and just zoning by law changes, even not even around the lake, just maybe zoning changes in general. I think it'd be um really helpful for everyone to kind of look at our zoning and just see if it makes sense. Um for where we're at right now, um especially with the development going on, not only around the lake, but in general. And I just think it's helpful for everyone to always revisit that and um take a look and see if it makes sense um as things evolve. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, so with proposing zoning bylaw changes around Lake Quanapawat, we could think. It it's like, right now, our focus is on Lake Quanapawat, but it it really should focus on the zoning bylaws as a whole.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just think because limited business right now is right around the lake, so, you know, we could do an overlay or you just look at zoning in general. And if it's working right now for our community, um I think it's pretty important.
All right, thanks. And this is more just an open discussion, um so please. Board members, and thank you, Aaron, if you'd like to add some comments to this.
Yeah, I I'd like to find out i- as a board if we all agree on the overall goals. And um in terms of Aaron's point about some of the zoning irregularities, um I did see some. When looking at the at the zoning charts, which I think you were gonna look at after we talked about the goals.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I guess I'll start off, so um. Starting with A. So protecting the lake from overdevelopment. Are we just thinking in the? In that one zone, or is it all the way around? How how is this being framed?
Good question, and I have some maps that are in here that you might have looked at that. Show just not like adjacent to the lake, but also across North Ave, across from Vets Field in both directions. And um thinking about the other zoning districts around the lake and the height and density um setback, so. Pull together some of that dimensional information, so we can review closer a- again tonight, so we can. As a board, agree on how we're moving forward with this. So yes, Matt, I think it starts with the lake. As our main point with the current um development at the top of the lake and with the recent. Town meeting warrant article that we reviewed, zoning bylaw change with the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, so. I guess it's more in response to that, but Joanne, if you want to jump in, because this, this was your original idea and I. If I'm not speaking correctly, I'd love to hear.
Yeah, I I think it does apply to all around the lake. That's my opinion. I I think um. Anything can happen, so if it's not too big of a chunk to bite off, yeah. I I think it would be good to have a lake district that we identify in terms of distance from the shore. And um. The whole, the whole all around the lake, and and in the zoning charts, you'll see that. I think most of the lake is covered in those.
Right.
Yeah, maybe not the east side that's strict, that's residential, but I think everything else is pretty much there.
So I I guess a question for me would be, so in the limited business zone right now. Do you get a sense that it's already overdeveloped, or it's developed properly, or it's underdeveloped? Because I I really don't know. You know, where people stand on that. If if it's developed fine where it is now, then you want to keep it the way it is.
Right.
If it's, if it's overdeveloped, then you want to limit what's there and and scale it back. So um right now, we have a a massive building that's sitting there that's underutilized, that's not being utilized at all. So um i- is that obviously, that's not a, any condition that anybody wants. If it was reoccupied and the parking lot filled with cars again, and there are people up there, would would that be an acceptable? Condition, or would people want to improve that?
Good question.
So improve it by putting housing there or putting a park there and having nothing there. I'm still up in the air on, not up in the air, I just don't know how people feel about what they envision. That area to be like.
And it is super subjective, Matt, and I think um Joanne and I and with and Aaron, that's what we're struggling with a lot. And thinking about, y- you just kind of hit it perfectly with what's already there. Somewhat of an empty building, but it's set really far back from the lake, so maybe that works. That distance setback from the lake is really nice, but what about that building? What if it does become taller, or it does become residence? Should we make decisions on what that should be limited to? There's other areas, though, that haven't been developed yet, Matt, that could easily become sixty-story tall. Buildings along North Ave, and there's also some districts, uh the district right along Lowell Street. That we can look at too to see, and it's like a discrepancy because there's a, the municipal um overlay district. Is confusing to me because there's also a business district there. And we have an opportunity to take a look at that and decide, like, what is it really? We know that if there's two overlaying districts. The more stringent one is the one that needs to be held, so the zoning bylaws say. But I don't know how that would hold up in ZBA for variance or special permit. And I think we need to, as a board, if there's something that I really want to see, I want us to take control over what these zoning bylaws are, clean up the zoning maps. And make sure that the special permits and anything else that is regarding dimensional height setback. Um area FAR, that it's clear and controlled, that it's not just left. Open for interpretation, and then we're stuck, or the ZBA is stuck with. Zoning bylaws that contradict each other, or a map that contradicts itself.
Right, so um just to answer your question. Um Matt, I I think, I think you're right that improving that area at the top of the lake probably. Is a little different for everyone and what they want. Um, I've been talking to a lot of people about it, and I'm hearing that people really do not want the level of development. To be greater than it is right now. So in terms of higher and more dense, I don't think people want that. That's what I'm hearing from the people of Wakefield. So um clear and controlled, Bill, yeah, I agree. I mean, i- if 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 we felt that the zoning bylaws today. Would be um observed and there would not be special permits or variances. Um that would be reassuring. But I don't know if there's anything we can do to prevent. Exceptions to the rules, so to speak, you know what I mean?
Right, and that's where I know Aaron mentioned it, and it's come up in our discussion. In our meeting the other night, uh last week, that it's like, is there a special lake district? That the limited business is controlled by a lake district area, the neighborhood. Business district, which is really cool to see that the maximum height of a neighborhood business district is thirty-five feet.
Yeah.
And and maybe that's some of our. Um and we can look at the wording after we move past this, um the first point, that there's wording in other bylaws that we can pull in. Possibly. To work for this lake district.
All right, yes, I mean, as long as there is, and and not we're gonna have cons- consensus on what everyone wants. But at least we have a a general direction and.
On the board or consensus to everybody wants in the town, cuz those are two different things.
Well, unfortunately, we're gonna have to get consensus on, you know, the town, because this goes before town meeting.
Right, and and I think.
You know, we can hope and wish for everything we want, but unless you, you get consensus in town. It's gonna get shot down.
Right, so we bring our best ideas. To public hearings, and hopefully we get the sixty, eighty people that we had. I would love that from the Friends of Lake Quanapawat article. And then we do get all that feedback that we need to move forward, and we do. Some type of campaign, for lack of a better term, to make sure. The other people, the rest of the people in the town that weren't able to attend the meeting, understand and they can watch the recordings, or there's some type of way to. Condense a presentation and have that shared on the town website. There's, there's a lot of things we can do to get the message out. Once we do get the input from the public.
Right, I I think there is a lot of support for this, and I like the words you chose here, Bill, on the um. The Roman numeral, the one, two, three, and four, protect the lake from overdevelopment. Preserve views and support open space, keep safe the people enjoying the lake. Because it seems it's increasing every day the number of people that are walking the lake. So I think those, those three, one, two, and three, if if we all agree on that, I think that would be a first step.
So, so moving on to to. To rumo- Roman numeral two, uh pres- preserve views. That's kind of subjective. In which way are you, are you looking? So you're talking from the common looking. Looking west, or I mean, how how do you, how are we looking at this aspect of preserve what view?
I guess preserving the views and I I group together preserving views and support open space together. I guess they could be on separate lines, again, just for the discretion, but thinking of them as pedestrian use. So the view from the pedestrian walking around the lake, to me, is what this meant. So if you're walking around the lake, you stop and you have this view. You're in this open space and you have this view. If we can preserve those views, instead of them being um overdeveloped, I guess, is is the term. That we have above that, meaning there's, you're not, instead of staring at residential or. Thirty-five-foot-tall commercial buildings, you're staring at a wall that is. Four, five, six stories, five stories tall, instead of the two and a half, so it's just, it's just really trying to figure out. What those views are, and again, it's very subjective, but I I would like this view for the pedestrian. Point of view. I hope that clarifies, Matt.
I guess, but, you know, having a a vista easement or something like that. Or protecting what you can see. We've, we've kind of gotten away from that, because unfortunately, some of the abutting property is in another town and.
Yeah.
Went and built a massive building that shines lights, so, you know, at this point. I I can't, I I have a hard time trying to preserve views when we're, it's out of our control. To uh to a great extent.
Yeah.
From the views that most people see, which is from Main Street looking. Where the sun's setting and hopefully not behind a a massive building, but that that's what happens.
Right.
So.
It's true, and a building done correctly, um say at the north side of the lake, that has. The right trees planted, walkways, place to sit and rest, um capturing these views. Um, you can start to frame some of these, and walking around the lake with the right trees. That could grow and the right buildings in the right place could could block out a lot of the light pollution that's coming from the other side of one twenty-eight. But once you're on the common side and on the main street side down, the there's, I mean, we know there's no way of bringing that back to what it was.
Yeah, but but these, these go both ways, so if if you're up at the head of the lake and you're looking down towards town, it it's, you know, it's a very nice view now.
Right.
Is that saying that you can't build anything in that view that that would change what you see right now? So meaning nothing taller in town that you might see from up there?
I don't think that's it. I don't, I don't think that's it. From the pedestrian view, walking around the lake, how do we preserve what it is now? If it is starting to change, like, I I mean, I know how much. We missed the church, and that was a horrible meeting that Tuesday night, when it did get struck by lightning and burned down right in the middle of our meeting. I mean, that that forever has changed. We don't know what's coming in, and hopefully something does. Another church is built there, or something's built there that's pleasing and aesthetic, that does take a view and captures the the views from the lake. But we don't know what will go there until it's in front of the ZBA.
But is is what we're talking about now, something that that could potentially affect that, or are we just talking, looking the other way? And and that's, I I'm, I'm trying not to be.
Yeah.
Too much of a contrarian here. I'm just kind of like putting it out there, because. We're talking a large area here. Um, this is a, this is a huge.
Yeah.
This affects a lot of people, that if we want to put a, you know, preserve the views, we need to define what views we want to see. Unfortunately.
And let's um, let's move on from this, only because, unless other board members want to discuss. I do like to keep it from the pedestrian view, the person walking around the lake, the person cycling, whatever it might be. Um, I'm more concerned with that, cuz I feel we can control that and propose at that level. Um, more than we can. more than we can any other.
I, I don't, I don't see how that's so much different, because when I've been a pedestrian, it's the same view I have as a pedestrian as somebody who lives around the lake.
I don't think that's true. The people that live along Main Street on the other side, they're a good twenty feet higher up, looking out their windows. And it's a whole different view that we really can't control.
What do you mean?
There's no land there to control it with. They're gonna be looking across the lake from Vets Field to the cemeteries, to the yacht club, and then from the yacht club, then there's control where what's happening. Joanne, I guess what you just said made me think too, what's happening on the other side of North Ave at Vets Field, right across, there's a whole district there that wraps around to Prospect and down on the south side of Church Street, that we can look at too when we get to the map. I mean, if you're thinking about what could change in the view, there's an area that can really change quickly, and that we should look at and try to understand it.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I, I agree that there's a lot of, a lot of different views. You can have a view from north to south. You can have a view from east to west, from south to north. Yeah.
Can I just chime in real quick? I think that's why this Vision 2030 and a master plan are really important, because you hear from, you know, we can all make assumptions, right, but we don't know how people feel, so I just wanted to re- reiterate that, sorry. That, you know, we can't, you know, assume what people think or feel. We can feel one way, but other people feel another way. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, let's, let's, um, let's move on and come back to that if we need to, because I think once we start looking at the maps, it might help us, it'll bring us back to the views, and maybe we start to understand like what views we can control, we can attract. I know part of my role being an architect, I've had to really think of those views, whether they're interior views looking outside and, or exterior views from yards, and thinking about hardscape landscape, as well as the structure, and, and how that controls, as well as shade and shadow from the sun, and then light pollution. So there's a lot of different aspects, and Matt, to your point, we're never gonna be able to control this, and we shouldn't be controlling it, but if we put together some guidelines and look at the zoning bylaws to help with density and height and setbacks, I think that's a start.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're talking about like views from an airplane. Yeah.
You have a drone?
Yeah, there's some great views from those.
I remember the fireworks a couple of years ago with the drone in there. It's like, what's going on? Then, then looking at the fireworks from the drone shot, that was amazing. Okay. Shall we move on to number two?
Yep.
Okay. I like this discussion, by the way. This is really good. Review zoning districts in other groups, bylaws that could assist. So districts, A, districts reviewed and highlighted sections, and that's a separate document I can bring up. Overlay district wording as examples, like the multi-reuse overlay district was just for the Franklin School, but there's some really good wording in there that we can look at. And Matt, were you part of that overlay district? Yeah, I know. I, I was part of the
I can't remember yesterday, so I
That's all right. I think it was twenty twelve and twenty fourteen, and when I came on the board in twenty fourteen, we went through the whole Franklin School, but before that, and I imagine Paul Reviss was really involved with how that overlay district was set up. My point is, some of the wording in there really spoke to me, like, looking at it, and we, we'll take a close look. Document any easements are around the lake. I'm sorry, that's, again, who, did you tell me this? I need to change it. Are there any easements that we should be concerned about? Utility-wise, other things that are being planned, and maybe that's a good question to incorporate into some of these thoughts and maps. Conservation Commission, yeah, we definitely need Conservation Commission and the Environmental Sustainability Group in some type of a, a conversation, just to, just to have it, whether we invite them to a meeting, once we get to a point where we're comfortable as a board, sharing what we want to share. But those are two, two, two important boards that I think we, meaning Joanne and Aaron, we kind of thought these two boards became more critical with this effort. So, I'll open, let me open the zoning analysis and share that. I, I think I need to update my zone, because I'm losing.
Yeah, they just didn't update. I had the same problem the other day.
Yeah, my work laptop's updated, and this is not, I'm like, what's going on? Okay, I think you're seeing the zoning districts one, so you can see section one ninety-six shared, so these are the districts adjacent to the lake, single residence, general residence, super happy, neighborhood business, we there's some interesting opportunities there. So limited business, and the reason it's highlighted for obvious reasons, because the limited business district includes business areas suitable, and, and, and that's what's happening at the top part around the lake that has been the topic of discussion recently. There's also business, and then there's the municipal district, and it's a special overlay district. And I have some questions about this, because I, I, I'm confused about the dimensional regulations of it. So, looking deeper into it, some desk definitions. When Joanne and I took a look at this, and we, we had all different conversations, and, and Aaron too, we're looking at, this popped out, pedestrian zones. So under section one forty-seven dash three, the area of space of the public roadway, and you could see this is pretty cool wording that we might want to look at to help us with any bylaws or suggestions of an overlay in the public place. So referring back to one forty-seven dash three and one forty-seven dash nine, meaning a clear pedestrian zone. So right down to B, the town council may require more than the minimum pedestrian zone width and order. So the thought was, and this was more my thought, I was pushing this, why is it town council and not the planning board that is requiring or reviewing any of this? So maybe this is something that we bring to the planning board for review, and this is something that then we are brought into the conversation at least. A lot of times, we're not even brought in the conversation. I think if we change or revise some of the bylaws, we can be brought into the conversation.
Well, I, I think the, the town council is mostly involved, because most of the stuff involves money. And they hold the purse strings, so we don't.
Good point.
So that, that's why a lot of this goes to the town council, because if it costs money to do something, they need to appropriate it and, and expend that.
Right, but they're appropriating money. Are they looking at what the design is? Are they looking at how it fits into preserving the views? If we could take and be part of these conversations, then put it against those three or four things that we believe should be part of the lake district. We're looking through that filter. I don't know if town council is. So if the town council may require more than, and they are the ones who are approving it, which is fine, my trust is in the town council for approving or allocating funds. I, I'd really like to see this also come to the planning board for review and approval as part of the process. Thoughts?
I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, this is Jonathan. Do you mind, can I make a, a quick comment?
Well, please do.
Thank you, sorry. Si- since, since this does cover the town council, I, I, I think you're right. I, I think there, you know, is, you know, as Matt mentioned, I, I definitely think that there is a role for the town council here, particularly as it relates to kind of the use of public ways and any funds that would need to be expended here. But this is an area where I, I actually do think there's also a role for the planning board. You know, as we think about things like traffic management, as we think about, you know, how this relates to the overall sort of integrity of, of, of the zone as it's, as it's codified in the bylaws, I think there's a level of expertise that the planning board brings that, you know, the town council, quite frankly, doesn't have. And, and so I wouldn't want to take out the town council's involvement in this, because again, I think there are good reasons why it's there. But I, I, I don't think that ours should be the only voice in, in this part of the process.
Good points. Thank you, Jonathan. Oh, and sorry, I know I put this green stuff in between there, but there's also the, under B, there were three different, just three different, yeah, there were three different points where this, this would be happening, areas with high peak period pedestrian volumes. If that doesn't speak to the lake, I don't know what does. When analysis suggests a wider pedestrian zone is necessary, if that doesn't speak to the lake, I don't know what does, because then we get into, of course, safe streets, protected bike lanes, and whatever it might be, multimodal transportation. When approved, street design plans call for additional width. So this is, that was part of B. Sorry if I missed that when I was first reading and went off on the tangent. And again, I think it's a great comment, not just removing town council, but somehow injecting, please include the planning board, not just as experts, but also as the communication portal to also bring in other boards and voices.
You know, I, I think this is very relevant as we, as the town grows and changes. There is a lot of pedestrians out there walking around the lake right now, so I could see this happening where you have these peak period pedestrian volumes, and the analysis suggests a wider pedestrian zone is necessary. These seem like kind of realistic things that could potentially happen, or if they're not already happening already.
Right. And there are pinch points, and Julie Scott Galvin, did I get that correct order? I've been following her on Twitter, and I suggest if you're not, please do. She's been posting some really cool things about what's happening around Wakefield. And she had a question about, like, where do you see a need for bike paths or some type of protected path or bike lane? And name your, what would be the top of your list? This was probably about a month ago, if I remember correctly. And of course, I said North Ave around the lake, and Main Street around the lake would be a tie for me with Church Street as well. So that, to me, that would be like, how do you, i- if the lake is what we're trying to protect, and our goal is to protect, make it safer for the pedestrians that use around the lake, I think we need to somehow control the vehicular traffic, multimodal, including cyclists that could hit a pedestrian. I don't know if you've ever been hit by a bike before. It could be worse than being hit by a car. So it's for both people. And it, right now, it's ridiculously unsafe.
It is. There was an accident out there today, by the way.
I hope they're all right.
I do too, but yeah, I don't ride my bike around there anymore.
I don't either. And that's a reason why. So, okay, I don't want to get too far off topic. So this is one thing we can discuss. There was some other points on there. And this was the one created, what I think was just for the Franklin School, one ninety dash ninety-seven municipal building reuse overlay district. It's only that little part of Nahant street where the Franklin School exists. But there's some really nice wording in here. Any residential uses permitted in that portion of the district, so overlaid shall be and it gets into some nice wording about, like, how, what's included, what isn't included. So I think if we do move forward with an overlay type district, there's some wording in here that really jumped out at me as to how you know, dimensional controls for building and our land and the municipal required under this. So it really and I highlighted a bunch of stuff. Hopefully, I'm, I'm not gonna go through it all, but it, it really gets into shall exceed a size equivalent, twenty-five percent of the square footage. It gets into really specific information. And I guess, I guess my thought is, it's like, if we are gonna control some of this with an overlay district, a lake district, do we start to speak about the enlargement of an existing building? How big can that building get? That's already there. And of course, I start to think of some of the limited business and neighborhood businesses that are already there that could change.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, I think we would want to specify that whether it could be enlarged or not, and how, how much. You know, another thought that comes to mind when you were talking earlier about examples of overlay districts. I remember when we spoke with Aaron, we were talking about Horn Pond in Woburn.
Yep.
Did you say there was a, a special district for that area?
They have an open space, kind of district for there, where you can't do any sort of development. And it kind of goes, it's like, probably has to do with more open space and recreational plan type work. But I don't think any developments ever happened around there, so I think it's really hard to compare the two. But, but yeah, they have their own little district there.
It's a good question, Joanne. I know, and if you've ever taken the tri-community bike path, which I think is excellent. I take it right from here on the west side and go over up to Stoneham and out through the school there. And all the way out to Winchester and hook into some residential streets that are part of the path. They're not protected, but they're really nice side streets that aren't busy, and right out to Horn Pond. That was my morning ride for a while, and I would take the family out sometimes too. And around that lake, it's a lot, it's wooded, and it's very hilly, and there's a DPW type site. That's the only municipal or commercial, the rest of it is all residential around it, so it, it it has a different feel.
Well, that, that Horn Pond happened, happened to parkway around there that they closed down, so it, it turned into a good buffer and a great pedestrian amenity, but that just happened to be that there was a parkway in there that was little used, so they were able to shut it down, so that was a
Right.
Worked out well for them eventually.
Yep, and I was thinking how, I know this, I don't intend for us to do this or propose it, but I love when I was a student at Wentworth, the closing of Memorial Drive on the weekends and just skating back and forth or whatever. When rollerblading was cool. It was just such a nice thing, thinking how Main Street from the common all the way to the top of the lake, if that was closed on certain days, just for people to enjoy it and have markets and parties and lots of things going on, and let traffic go around a different way. Just for a couple Sundays a month, just to see how that felt. It'd be really cool. Another thing, some other, there was a proposal, it's not even around here. I think it might be Raleigh or another place. But they made it into a one-way, so they closed off one side of the street, so you could only go on North Ave, South and Main Street North. And that was done on the weekends, and they put in movable barriers every so often, so that enlarged the, the side of it. And I don't want to get too sidetracked, but there's a lot of different ideas we can do to accommodate the lake on the busiest times, to really make it a place, a draw for people that when they are here, they're so hungry and thirsty, they go downtown too. I just, it just sticks in my, it's been sticking in my head for a while. Every time I go around the lake, whether I'm driving, walking, or biking early in the morning, I won't go around the lake when it's busy, but it, it's like, how cool would that be if the south side of Main Street and the north lane of North Ave were closed on the weekends? It would, I know traffic would be tough, but man, the people it would draw safe, you know? Okay, so lake zoning district, this is just more wording, referencing more of the overlay district that's in here, and it talks really, it gets into height, it gets into setbacks. And I really like the wording. It's like, in case of lot, which is adjacent to two or more zoning districts, the height regulation's applicable. So it, it's, it's constant in a lot of our zoning bylaws, but it would be good if we are going to, again, if we're going to do a separate lake zoning district, it would be good to pull some of this information, this wording that would help. And it talks about open space here, completely devoid of structure, parking space, and just quick definition, definitions. So if you're not sure what open space is, here it is. We spell it out perfectly. Or we alter it to how we want it to be for the lake district. Or we alter it to how we want it to be for the Lake District. So this is interesting. And I highlight, I was going to highlight this in green because it really bothered me. Municipal building reuse special permit, the planning board as the special permit granting authority. Okay. That's good to know. I don't think anything has come up in front of us. The, Matt, I don't remember the light coming in front of us for a special permit.
The what?
The, the light, the, the gas and light. The building across from Vets Field.
No, it didn't. I don't, I don't think it's in the, is that in the overlay district or?
I don't know.
I, I, I don't think they're reusing it. They were modifying it.
Right. This is only for, uh, what I could find is this is only for Franklin.
Yep.
That's why I think it's more, it's just for Franklin, why I put that at the top.
Oh, so are you saying that, that, that it would make sense if that light, gas and light building wasn't a municipal district? Cause that's a municipal utility?
It's, it's not in a, and I know this is where I went back and forth. I learned a lot reading this and, um, but getting deeper into it anyway. The municipal building reuse overlay district is not the municipal building district. They're two separate things. And I believe this one is just for the Franklin School.
Oh, and there's another one that's not reused. It's just municipal.
Yeah, I figured that out after reading this tw- through twice.
Well, you beat me, because it took me about four or five times going back and forth. So that's why I highlighted it and wrote it and wanted to explain.
Yeah, so someday if, if the gas and light department got bought out by NSTAR, then maybe we would have a chance of, uh, working on that site, but.
Or we, if it's not in the municipal district now, that's a bylaw change we should make. And it should come in front of the planning board for a special permit. This is back to Joanne's comment earlier. And when she brought this up in the meeting, I started to go deeper into a lot of the zoning bylaws, because I'm like, well, how, you know, to Joanne's point, it's like, well, it's not just the lake, it's going to affect different things. And then we have the municipal district and we have this. So if we're only doing the Lake District, there's overlapping overlay districts now. I know that sounds confusing, but, uh, when we go to the map, we'll, we'll take a look. These are the last two sections, um, the special permit and the affordability part. Again, making sure that if we do an overlay district for the lake, that we would, we want to make sure that we pull in some of this wording too.
What do you, what is the affordability referred to? What does that mean?
Again, I think this was just for the Franklin School, which was converted from a school to condos. And Matt and I were both on the board when this all went from start to finish. So, um, I think it was really just making include permanent and available, so making sure the right number was there for the amount of affordable units versus letting them just hit a certain percentage.
Okay, so it refers to the affordable housing?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's that last part in there, which I believe is in the affordable affordability part of, uh, our bylaws too about shall give preference to the selection of buyers, tenants of Wakefield residents. Woo. So I hope you enjoyed that reading. It really helped me and it helped me to really try to narrow it down to certain things that I think applied to what we're trying for, for this meeting, for the discussion. I do want to get to those maps, because that is, oh, I'm not sharing, hold on. Zoning map review. So that's this is where, and I hope this helped. I, I threw a satellite in there with the zoning map, so let me zoom out a little bit and hopefully it's not too small. But this is the northeast top of the lake. And you could see that this is the limited business, the pink. And then we have business that runs through here and then neighborhood business that's just across Lowell. So from, if you think across here, the gas station, you know, Combs and Honeydew and Bolinos. Then there's this business strip. Sorry, Matt, were you going to say something?
No, I was just saying that a lot of that district is in, in one twenty-eight, so if if the state ever wants to
Right.
Another fucking donuts in, up in the highway, they can do that.
Right, there's one twenty-eight here. The issue is that this is business district. And multi family housing can go in there. Well, with a special permit, we could, we could look at that information. I, let me, I don't want to speak out of turn on it.
Yeah, that, that isn't Gertrude Spalding Park up there? It looks like that might be in the business district.
Well, that's why I wanted to jump down to this municipal district. You can see the municipal district here with this piece here, which is the walking path along the lake. This is limited business and this is that business piece that comes right in. So if I jump quickly back to that, sorry, that was kind of fast. To there, you can see, and I didn't do the whole overlay of the municipal and this, but that's my, if I had, that's what I'm going to do this week, is to take the municipal and overlay it with this one to see that, because the municipal is more difficult to understand what the dimensional regulations are. Or who approves it. I couldn't quite find all that.
Right.
Let me talk to our G I S coordinator to see if I can, see if she can do like an overlay and see. You know, yeah, that's weird.
Right. So you see what's happening here. We have this business, this limited business. And the neighborhood business is across Lowell Street. To Matt's point, this is one twenty-eight here. But this is the lake and this is the walking path along the lake. This is that municipal park. And if I jump back down to there again, you could see that municipal park touches Lowell Street. And that's the playground, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep. This gap. And then it starts again. This gap in this part on this side really scare me after looking at this, because that's this right here. This piece is a business spot. I don't know who owns it. It's not municipal. And on the other side of it is right here. And there's another piece that's owned by someone. That's business district.
I think that's where the Lenai Island was, which was
Right.
So.
I think Frank owns it. I was kidding. That's like the hot dogs and sausages.
Is that not in the wetlands at all?
I, you know what? I don't know. And you can see, I think this is the ramp, so a lot of this is probably not buildable anyway, but there's this part right here. That is on limited business, business. And this, I believe, right there is the Gertrude Spalding playground. Which is municipal. So I am a little concerned and I wanted to bring that up after looking at the maps. And I know during our meeting, meeting Joanne, me and Aaron, we didn't really get a chance to look at this, because it's something that was part of my tasks and I pulled it together after we had met. And you can see, here's a there's the whole parking playground. And then there's this area here, you can't really see my mouse, but yeah, that I'm concerned about where the parking lot is. And on the other side.
So is that, is that little yellow area, um, that isn't red? Is that, is that what Matt is saying he thinks is Lenai Island, Laney Island, the park now?
I think it's this part right here. I think Lenai Island used to be like right off the ramp as you came off, it was right in here.
Oh, I thought that, that seems kind of far from the lake for that.
It's not that far. It's about a hundred and fifty feet to two hundred feet. You can see that little stretch there. I mean, if we're sitting where this business park comes across, if this is where it was, that parking lot, I think is right here. And there's the road. And there's the playground and the memorial, the brick area.
Oh, okay.
And then there's this patch of business and limited business.
So, um, from what I'm looking at right now on, um, Maps Online, Wakefield, this is all owned by the town. All, um, from B to the, my right, so that's all owned by the town.
So does that mean the municipal map is not correct with that gap?
Yeah, we might need to update that. And maybe I will talk to someone about that.
This is what we need to figure out.
Yeah, it says Conservation Commission, town of Wakefield. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think that white area in between is where is the Laney Island.
Yeah, because the ramp would be here coming off the highway. And I, I remember it being like right in there. I, I can't remember how close it was. It was, I was a little kid.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing here, but I can confirm that. And then ask about the map as well.
Yep. Okay, so there's that top part of the lake. And if we look to the left and come down the limited business, we end up in the northwest corner of the lake at North Ave and Quanapower Park, what, Parkway. So that's, um, you know, fifty and, and two hundred and one hundred in the middle. And then there is the North Ave properties. And these two properties here, right, I think this is Juliana Salon. And then we have the two, um, new apartment buildings here. And then we have Wakefield Subaru and Volvo. This is where that sixty is, is sixty feet, meaning the height of the buildings, but, um, that's that wetlands area.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and this is the KFC. So we've talked a lot about this, but we also have, um, you know, zoning is good. You can see what's happening here with, um, the residence district and the business district and the limited business, which is now um, locked in with the, um, recent A and R's. So what did I, B is business, limited district and paying, general residence and Y. Red arrow show distance to be determined from lake to North Ave. Meaning what are we thinking about? Like, that's possibly about seven hundred feet. Looking at this six-ten for this length, I was estimating that to be out seven hundred feet. Just to give us an idea of how far from the lake that whole piece of property is. Sixty represents sixty feet maximum heightened bill and buildings and business district. Lake zoning analysis to see southwest corner. So this was, again, diving into this, I'm like, wait, what's going on at this corner? Because this, this is my favorite part of the lake by far. Vets Field, um, this wraparound here with the park and cemeteries and it's just the walk here from the church all the way around is just beautiful. This is a super hazardous intersection for pedestrians. I don't care, bikes, walking, whatever. As soon as they cross through, they got that little elbow that, that, that joins on to Prospect. That's, that's so, so crazy. On the other side of the tracks is a business district across here. And that is also this business, this, there's that business district that goes down North Ave. And it makes sense, but this corner right here, this right here, we could see sixty-foot tall buildings across from Vets Field. Do we want that?
No. Is, is the, um, the municipal gas and light in the business district there, or is it?
No, I could jump down and show you here again, at the very bottom, you'll see this sliver. This blue one here, that's the light and gas.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's on the other side of the tracks.
Right. Is it's on the side of the tracks near the lake, right?
Yeah, so if you go in here, you could see the laundromat, giggly otty, auto body. So if this whole parcel of land, and Aaron's working on finding out of the property owners, that way we can include them in the process. So this has come up a couple of times. It, it would be so cool to have the property owners notified and be part of this conversation from the beginning, meaning when it becomes public for us to, to discuss.
Oh, because right now they could build really high there too.
Right, and this is where those red arrows, the distances, oh man, how far from the lake do we want to think about this? And seven hundred feet from the lake might not sound, or might sound really far, but when you're in Vets Field or you're in that area and we have now sixty-foot tall buildings across the tracks, it just opened my eyes to like, should this be a neighborhood business and not a business district, especially north of Prospect?
Yeah, definitely, because that, um, giggly otty, auto body, for example, that's been there forever.
Right, and we, we want to include them in this, that, because who knows what they might be doing? They might be thinking, you know, I'm done with cars. Let's sell this place and, or let's develop this into a, you know, a five-story apartment building.
More apartments?
Well, well condos, why not?
Yeah, overlooking the lake, high-rise condos, right?
Sunrise in your kitchen? You won't get much of a sunset, because Prospect goes up pretty high, but still, it's, um, it's a killer location.
Yeah, that is.
And then right across on the south side of church, running down north. How far down north do we want to think about that height?
Pretty far.
Yeah, it's funny, I don't know if you've ever played softball. I've had a few games at Vets Field and some leagues and stuff and you, you think of that whole, how would that ballpark feel with some, you know, buildings that you can smash the ball to? But it's like right now, getting it on, it's always like a fun thing to get the ball onto Church Street. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they changed that. Yeah, I know what you mean.
Yeah.
There's a lot of balls going to the street.
Yep. Yep.
But, um, further down where it's business district on North Ave, where the two new apartment buildings are, you can actually see those all the way across the lake, which is kind of surprising.
Are you right here?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep. Agreed. So these are the maps and, um, some of the options that I thought of as I was doing the maps, thinking about, um, neighborhood business notes, the idea of changing the business district here to neighborhood district, which would change the height limit from a maximum of sixty feet to thirty-five feet. And the red arrow show the distance, so that's to be determined, but I was thinking it's, you know, it was unfortunately, my laser only goes about two hundred feet. And I was like trying to connect it, but I think it's about, um, eight hundred feet to like, where I was here at the edge of it, to the backside of it, I was thinking it was about eight hundred feet to the lake.
Yeah.
This, because the field is in here and it's about, it's about two something here, two, two forty, I think.
So I know Matt mentioned last time that if there's an overlay district, the, is it the more restrictive requirement that's followed?
Um, so it is, so whatever is more restrictive is the one that has to be followed.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that a special permit or a variance couldn't be applied for with the zoning board of appeals, which is fine. That's how the process should go for any type of variance or special permit.
So Bill, were you thinking of something that in, that encompasses a distance from the lake?
That was what we kept hitting on when we talked about, well, how far around the lake? And I don't know what the distance would be, but how else do we contain it? We can't say it just goes
The, the, the problem comes up is you need to define what the lake shore is. Is it the highest water level? Is it, you know, because, believe it or not, you, you can have a lot of interpretations as to what the edge of the lake is. And then
Yeah.
Is it, does it touch any lot within that distance? Or does, does a lot have to be completely within that?
It's messy. It's messy.
Yeah, it is. And I've got into, you know, fights, well, not fights, but areas where I've measured, had to measure certain things to make sure that a parcel or a building is definitely outside of a certain range. And when you come down to someone measuring within a tenth,
Yeah.
Say, you know, I'm outside of this, I'm not, you know, you can't touch.
We don't want to, we want, we don't want that type of, I don't want to call it a loophole, but we don't even want that type of discussion. So i- if, if distance is what we're thinking about, maybe it's more of a street as a boundary. And it becomes the north side of this street, the south side of this street. Maybe that's a better way to word and define it.
Well, a- as you know, from some of our past zoning changes, the town's gone to zoning entire lots.
They know where you go.
Off of the GIS plan.
Yep.
So you need to pick the lots that are going to be included and include them in.
Agreed.
And then determine what happens if another lot's added and it's a split zone. Because that will happen at some point, so.
Totally agree.
There's a lot here to, to think about and plan. Because it gets messy and then the ways to get around it if people want to be outside of that.
Right, and that's what I was hoping that we would have as a discussion tonight. And with your experience, it just, just really helps us understand how this could be formulated. And i- it's not about trying to trick or do whatever. It's like just trying to be clear on what it is. So people can give their opinion on exactly what we present. And then it could be modified from their comments to really how it works and adjusts. So it is clear when it, or if it becomes a lake district.
Well, then, then take a distance out of it and include specific lots. So, so each owner knows they are clearly within that or, or not.
Right, but.
Otherwise, it's, it's, it's going to get real messy and it's not worth it.
I think it's such a task that you could do, Matt. I, I know this is a, this is a whole board effort and it's going to be interesting to see how it works out. But, you know, here's the, here's the full zoning map without the overlays. So you can see how far that goes. And if it is one twenty-eight as a boundary and it is, I don't know, do we get bold? And it's the train tracks on this side. And then when it comes down to a certain area, it's no, it's Elm Street.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Right, and it's, it's not Main Street. Maybe it jumps back. I, I know we feel pretty safe with what's happening on this side of the lake. But then anything that would change in general residence or resident, single residence would have to be, be a huge variance and subdivision and whatever it might be. So that's still thirty-five feet.
Right. Um, the other thing, like when you mentioned, what, what do you, like the edge of the lake where the lake meets the land?
Yep.
I know up by where the, the lakeside, the hotel there in Lakeside Office Park. There's like a lot of swamp area where it's just like a wetland.
Do you mean on the opposite side of the street?
No, no, I mean behind the hotel. Like the hotel's pretty close to the lake.
Like right in where this thirteen hundred is. Like in that area, or I'm sorry, is that, yeah, thirteen hundred?
Yeah, I think it's right around the line there where the thirteen hundred meets the blank, the pink area to the right.
Little playground and then it kind of comes back out to the walkway behind that area.
Yeah, there's, that's a lot of wetland up there too.
I'm not sure if it's designated as wetland, but that's again, when we have that conversation with the Conservation Commission, we will know.
Yeah, there's also the yacht club up there, which is, looks like it's in general residence, I think.
They get single residence. I don't, that's, I'm not worried about it.
Is that, is, who owns that? Do you know?
Yacht Club? Yacht Club, sorry. Yeah.
I think it's one of the, the oldest lake yacht clubs in the country.
I remember seeing that too.
It's, it might be town owned.
Yeah, when we were really looking for stuff to do for the Cub Scouts when everything went to COVID last year, with one of the other leaders, I put together Scavenger Hunt, which became like a history hunt and different facts about Wakefield. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, we did that in Lexington.
Yeah, I came across like so many different facts and different things that we added. Of course, we put it in a way that the, the scouts could, could work on it. It didn't go over as big as I thought it would, but a, a lot of the scouts did it and I think they had fun just kind of connecting with their dens. But it was good to learn about, yeah, the oldest yacht club, the meaning behind, you know, Wakefield and how, you know, Reading and the history of it was pretty cool.
Did you have them running around, like getting evidence?
No, you couldn't, not at the beginning. It was like total lockdown and we didn't know what to do. We couldn't have a pack meeting, so. And we were at the church. I don't want to get too sidetracked, but we're at the church to comment there and we couldn't meet. So we were trying to give them some cool things to do.
Yeah.
There was, okay. Let me stop this and jump back to the topics. And I know this could, this doesn't have to keep on going tonight. This is a big discussion, but it was more about getting this out here. So as a group, let me make sure I'm sharing again. Share. Here. Zoning map review of properties and we just did that. Highlight the properties around the lake. Erin's working on for future, if we are going to contact these property owners, if we start to work down there, she's already started, so we're happy. Set up meeting with bylaw committee. So this hasn't been done yet, but after Dan Lieber's comments at our last meeting, I think it's really important that, and I could do this, I don't mind, or Joanne, if you want to do this. I actually know Dan on a, on a friend level. So I think it would be good to, to understand more about the procedures and updates. That way, we just know what to include. And I mean, I know, we know the bylaw changing or revi- articles going to town warrant, we know how that all works. But for somebody sitting on, whether it's a town charter and the bylaw committee, how does this all affect what's going on? And Joanne, this brings even deeper into, like, how do we make sure there aren't other places that are, the wording is just not correct? How do we bring it all together?
Other things that we haven't found that might be out there, you mean?
Yeah, that we don't even know about because we haven't looked in the town charter for stuff or there's other parts of the bylaw outside of one ninety that section one ninety that we should look at.
Yeah.
Be, once we figure out, again, a direction where we're going, I want to include somebody like Dan Lieber to understand what the bylaw committee is doing and what their schedule is. I don't want to overlap efforts, so if they're working on something, maybe it could be a combined thing with one or two people from our board to just be part of their conversation, so at least we, we know what's going on.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. And then the town engineer.
I think once they get into the dimensional regulations, going through the, checking the zoning bylaws, they're going to be involved with us quite a bit, so.
Yep. I agree, and that's how it should be.
Because they're doing the update, you mean they're going to check with us on what, what it is today?
Well, they, they're going to parse every word and make sure it makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something I'm not really that good at, so it is helpful to have people who, who think that way. So I don't know if you like this little table. I have it as an Excel spreadsheet and then I copied and pasted and then reviewed it and copied it again and looked at it to make sure I had all the information correct. If you do see any errors, please let me know because my eyes were like crossing at one point. But this is a working table. It's not the complete table. If you want the complete table, these links work. You can just click on it and it will go right to the link. So I made sure that in here, anything like floor area ratio, if you're concerned what that means or gross floor area, you can click on this and we'll go right to the definition in our bylaws. And also this nifty little chart down the bottom because I'm all about graphics and visual. Matt, that could be you right there. I don't know how tall you are, but I think you're like six foot five there. You could see here's single residence, general residence and neighborhood business, thirty-five feet. There is business and there's limited business. Just to get an idea of height. And this is, obviously I highlighted limited business, but also took in the business and the neighborhood business in there to see what are the differences in the ratios. So the FAR, the floor area ratio, meaning the combined floor plates all added up of the building, what is that ratio? And that's what these numbers represent. You can see the setbacks with some interesting information, meaning limited business versus business has no setback. Unless you can see number seven, minimum of fifteen feet adjacent to a residential district, ten feet from which shall be not paid. And then if you jump into business here, which maximum height sixty feet, if you look at eight, buildings over fifty feet shall provide a front yard setback of five feet plus one foot for each foot of height in excess of fifty feet. So there is some control about setback and where it sits on the site, but way different than what you see for a limited business. Which is nice that that's what's around the lake mostly. So again, back to the business down across from Vets Fields in that east and southeast corner, I'm sorry, west and southwest corner. I'm really concerned, my biggest concern is, would be that area.
So basically on the height there with the floor area ratio, they could have like a ten thousand square foot lot and have fifteen thousand feet of square feet of floor area total?
I didn't do, I didn't do math, but limited business.
One and a half on business.
Business is one and a half and limited business is one point two five, so. Yeah, you'd have to see what each floor plate is. And the trick to this, and I know working in different projects where we're trying to massage the floor area ratio to fit. And a lot of this is, I do a lot of reuse. As an architect, I believe that we really don't need any new buildings that we can just renovate and add on to what we have. That reusing, repurposing biz, like buildings in the north end and Chinatown in that area. We, we would look at putting a floor or two on top and we would already, always mess with the floor area ratio. And thinking about how a floor plate, let's say the floor plate's a thousand square feet, for example. It doesn't mean the other floors are all a thousand square feet. They could be less where there's a mezzanine level and that's a different definition, or if there's rooftop areas that are less. So it, it doesn't really mean that each floor is the same. And that's the trick to making a building look right for scale. Meaning if that fifth floor, fourth floor is pushed back twenty or thirty feet, when you're walking by the building and only appears to be three stories high and seems to fit into the neighborhood, even though out of sight, there's another couple of stories behind it. So that's where the floor area ratio and as an architect trying to figure out how that works for scale of the street and everything helps. So I wouldn't take it straightforward as each floor piled up. Sorry if that was a long explanation, but I was getting tired. There's a book that kind of changed my life in architecture school and it was Christopher Alexander, Pattern Language. If you ever come across it, it's about that thick. But it helps understand the ratio of how wide a street should be in a neighborhood, in a sidewalk, in a front stoop and the stories and the height of the building to have it feel like what trees and lamps and lights and all that should be. And it really, it speaks to how you feel comfortable in different areas. And if anything that I would like to do is when you're walking around the lake, that we make people feel safe and comfortable.
Um, so Bill, now that we've reviewed the material, I guess what's the, what's the end goal for tonight? Was it just to review the, the documents or do you want specific next steps outlined or defined based off of reviewing those materials? What's the, what's the end goal for today?
Great question, and I think it lies back in number one, what are we trying to do? Now that we've gone through it, we've had different topics discussion. Does anybody feel comfortable with it? You know what? I don't, I don't really want to do this. This isn't for us to do. Or are you set on this board as being, should we do a lake district? Should we really take it to consideration and do a new overlay lake district? Or does it become some changes to the bylaws that already exist and it's not about a lake district? It's about just controlling what's already there. So there might be a couple of different paths that we want to discuss to move forward with.
I think first for me, I'd want to see you like, I know we mentioned like to find, to get like the wording in regards to the municipal overlay. And the, I think reviewing that material, if there is on that would be, I think, one, one step in the right direction first. Just take a look at that. I think that that would probably provide me a little bit more clarity to, to understand like how I would want to move forward.
Okay. Are you guys seeing the discussion topics?
Yep.
Okay, good, because it's like a green and not a yellow boundary around it, so, okay, all right.
Well, the one thing that, and I don't know if you wanted to bring it up, Bill, and I don't know if it's my place, is like how we kind of, if we do an overlay district, the development that happens there, not that we're anti-development, but we have certain standards that we want things done there to control like water quality, things like that, runoff. So that's also something I just want to throw out there.
Like the green development idea?
Yeah.
Right.
Not saying that we're anti-development, because we already have development there.
Right.
How do we control it as we move forward?
That's a good definition too. It's, I am definitely not anti-development. And I don't want to just use this term smart development because it can be taken so many ways. But it's because of our, because of how important the lake is, it's a good place to start. Our lake is the life of our town and we all know this. And it's just like, how do we, again, do we protect it? Do we preserve it? Do we keep the people safe around it? How do we control pollution? This is what we kept hitting on as common themes, so. Is it as easy as saying, you know, everything that's done around the lake, no matter what, needs to come in front of the planning board because we are going to bring in the rest of the boards to help make the right decision. We are going to be able to pull in a public hearing to get the opinion of the public to make the right decision. But it's like, excuse me, I don't know if that's possible to do, but that's how I feel it should be. And I'm not a control freak at all, but I'm trying to figure out if it's like if we become that medium or that place where what other board has the public hearings that we do to draw the people in to get the opinion? So we can form that acknowledgement or ruling or endorsement or whatever it might be that's needed to go forward. I think that's our board.
Can, can we, if we do decide to write a bylaw for an overlay district, would it have the goals in it, you know, like this wording that we have here?
I, it could be anything we want it to be, really. And then we, obviously when we're looking at the wording, we would want to include Town Council, Tom Mullen, to make sure what we're wording isn't causing any real issues, a legal issue, sorry. But then it would be, what does the public think? And then with that input from the public, then the, then our wording changes to really adjust to what it, what everybody that attends wants it to be. And if people don't attend, then I don't know.
Right, I think that's, yeah, I think try to get it, it might not be perfect. But if we have the general idea and people hear about it and can weigh in on it at town meeting, I, I think that would be a good thing.
Well, to Matt's point earlier, it still has to go to town meeting if there's a bylaw change for two thirds vote. Awesome, and that's where it should go.
Yeah, right.
Yep, we can just be that conduit, that medium that helps bring the right people in for the discussion. Right.
So, I mean, I always think simplicity is a good thing. But, you know, how, how simple can it be? But you know, how, how simple can it be and still carry, you know, have teeth in it? Unlike you, you know what I mean? Like you mentioned, if they do want a variance or a special permit, it comes to the planning board, but can you even put something in there where they can't do that? It's not as easy to, to just work around it?
Possibly, and I looked at the use chart and I was thinking about adding that to the reading materials and I'm like, no way are we getting into this. I think Erin even, we looked at it quickly and it's just, and Joanne you too, it's like some of the, the options, it's just some of it's so outdated and other things are just completely missing, but yeah, it needs an overhaul, but. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That was just too much right now.
Because I remember the, the lake article, the FOLQ article eleven, I, I thought it was worded very, it was very complicated, the wording, and I don't think it was really as complicated as it sounded. It was just kind of hard to understand.
Yeah, and this, the process with the planning board and the public participation, I think helps with that. It helps to simplify it and it, it just wasn't working with that one, but it has in the past, it's worked well and in my experience, things are really complicated before it gets simplified. It just, there's so much that has to be thrown on the table and then sorted into piles, whatever you want to call it, pulled out of the shed and reorganized and then thrown out couple piles. Nope, we're throwing this out. Yep, we got to keep this and we're going to revise it. Yep, this is perfect the way it is. And then you start pulling from those piles to really form the simplistic wording of what it needs to be. Welcome to my brain.
Right. So in some of those areas, like that business district that you're concerned about, on the side of the tracks there where the Gigliotti's auto body is and all that. If there's an overlay district over that, then that would change that potentially from business to whatever the overlay is, right?
And that's to Matt's point, is it a distance from the lake? Because it's going to get messy or is it really spelling out which properties it includes?
Right.
I think that becomes a really important point. It became clear to me as soon as Matt brought it up. I'm just like, yeah, it, it can't be a, a distance. It's like, how do you set the distance from where to where?
Right, right, you can't.
Where's the boundary of the lake?
Oh, well, Matt, you're a surveyor, so you don't, you wouldn't go out there with your yardstick?
I, I need to know what to, what the whole, you know, what to measure from. That's part of, that's the whole thing is, is know what, you know, what your constraints are.
Matt, you could borrow my paddleboard and you could set a transit up out in the lake and you.
Yeah, I could see where the problem is, especially in those areas where it's not really that clear what is water and what is land.
Right.
It, it, it happens in all water issues is because things change. There's, there's erosion and accretion and, you know, land comes and goes and suddenly the distance you thought you had to a wetlands or to the ocean has changed dramatically and then suddenly you can either build or you can't, so you just have to be careful with that.
Yeah.
That is a weird thing. I have a neighbor who's, they have this huge lilac bush and it's like moved over into my yard over time. So, yeah, I, I can, I can imagine that is a, a problem.
Yeah. Okay, so back to that original question, I think Megan brought up, it's like, like, where do we go from here? So I, I think it is important to think, do we really want? Number one there, it's like, do we have action items from tonight? I'm not sure. I think this was more of a big discussion to just, I think it needs to sink in.
Mr. Chair, can I make a, a suggestion?
Yes, please, Jonathan.
I, I, I was going to say, I, I think that it may be worth, as a next step, maybe having some conversations with some of the groups that you have listed in, in the document. I, I think particularly the Environmental Sustainability Group, the Conservation Commission and, and the Town Engineer. I, I think there's probably some detailed information on, you know, maybe some of their concerns and goals that might, might help the, the planning board sort of frame out the, the purpose of what you're trying to do before you get into sort of the next steps of thinking about, you know, sort of specific language or, or a specific approach around a zoning overlay district. I think the concept that, you know, that, that you and Joanne have, have put together is, is a great one and this has been a, a really wonderful discussion. But I wonder if there are some more voices that you may want to consult with just to, you know, start to frame this out a little bit more before you decide kind of where to go.
Okay, that's a good point.
And also to Jonathan, the Vision 2030, I think we have a lot of valuable information that's going to come forward that could help us to kind of point us in the right direction.
Absolutely. I think both the, the feedback from sort of the, the first public forum and the survey that's, that's still open this week and also the, the next one as well.
Right, and good plug. Get that survey done if you haven't, please. If you need it, go to the town website.
Yep, it's open until Friday, so.
Yep. I wish I've been emailing it to people.
I wish we could get some little stickers, you know, like the I voted stickers. I did the envision, I mean, the vision survey.
Yeah, well, we have, we have, we have three surveys, right? I think three. Yeah, so this is the first one.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I think we kind of need to start a little closer to home and, and all, all of us kind of come to what we see is going forward before we start asking other people, because I, I still think we're all a little not on the same page on, on how, how to proceed, so. You know, just for, just to throw it out there, for me, I think the view from the head of the lake down this way is, is, is nice, so why shouldn't we capture some of the people walking around the lake and turn it into a business district and protect, perhaps have a restaurant or, you know, something up there that captures the people and more to the point, their money that are walking around the lake and the town can benefit from that. So, you know, just, I think each of us needs to, to do a little searching and see how we envision at least ourselves and then we can start asking other people how we think or how, how they think about it, so I think that might be a good place to start.
Yep. Good comment.
So, you know, talking about views, it, it might change the, the way people see that area of the lake, but from that, the perspective into town, you know, that might be the one we want to protect. I don't know if we're, you know, if that's the way we want to go.
That's a good point, Matt, and you know, buildings can be beautiful too and nice to look at and they could be proportionately pleasing and feel safe around too, and, and that's something that I know we don't have full control of, but that top of the lake area is definitely an economic opportunity. Good points.
And, and you got to remember, if people are going to be living up there, they don't necessarily want people walking through their front yard. So that, that is, is always one of the concerns is depending on what you wish for. You got to look at, you know, the benefits or, or non-benefits, so. If, you know, if, if people wanted that all to be single-family housing up there along the lake, that's all well and good, but single-family housing, they don't want people walking through their, you know, between them and their lake. So, you know, you, you got to look at it both ways.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. You know what comes to mind for me and, and Matt, I mean, that's a brainstorming session in and of itself, like a dream session on what you would like to see at the top of the lake. You know, the type of architecture and like you say, that concern about how do we, how do we do something where it's really welcoming to all the walkers as well as something that's going to really enhance it and bring people in and potentially bring some business in. You know what I mean? It'd be good like on the survey, on the vision survey, if we had some detailed questions about that. Because people might have some dreams and some good ideas on that.
It, it's funny, it just made me think when, when I was at the Voak and I would take my sketchbook and bike down to the lake and sit right on Main Street on some of those benches under the trees, I would sketch that beach and the lake and all the way to the yacht club. I wish I still had that sketchbook because I had different structures and different things going around the lake that just made sense to me at the time. But, you know, things have changed since I was like sixteen, seventeen, but at the same time, it's like that idea of like what the lake means to people. And it, it drew me literally to sit there and in a meditative way be able to sketch and think and feel so attached to the lake.
Yeah, have you ever been to Acadia National Park to Jordan Pond?
Yep, and I had some popovers.
Yep, and that's a really nice little restaurant right there.
Yep.
Beautiful views.
There's many. There are a lot of opportunities and Matt, I really like your idea of what is at the top of the lake as far as a business. And what I think that business district up there could become is a neighborhood business, like it is across Lowell Street and not an opportunity for a sixty-foot tall building, but an opportunity for a thirty-five-foot tall building. But that's something as a board, and I don't want to have my stronger opinions overrule what we want to do. I just want them out there so you can understand how I'm feeling about it, but I am so open to this discussion. And again, tonight, what do we want to solve? I think we've already accomplished a lot just by reviewing this and having small discussions about different parts. I think it's going to take a while for it to sink in and I think we can come back with this on our agenda for the next meeting with something a little bit more solid, so my suggestion, my suggestion is that Joanne and I meet again and take in these notes, maybe watch a little of the video before and figure out how to condense it and really massage it to a place where it's take, I guess, just taking in this meeting. And then present it back out to the board in material similar to this. And then at our next meeting, we can really decide or invite Concom or representative from another board. Or we draft something that goes out to them.
I would say having a conversation first might be the best idea, just because I think they might have their own things like you were saying in the work, so. I would recommend doing that, but.
Okay.
Do we also?
Sorry, it's another piece of the puzzle that we just need to bring in. That's true, yep.
Do we also want to include friends, friends of the lake as well, since they were?
Wow. That's awesome. Sorry.
I just noticed that they weren't, they weren't listed, so.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Megan. I feel horrible about that oversight.
Yeah, and I think again, it's just being proactive and how we move forward, right? And things are going to happen at just, if we can have some, not control, I don't like using that word. Open conversations about what we'd like, I think is really important.
Yep. Okay. So as a board, do you all feel comfortable with Joanne and I meeting again? And Erin, if you'd like to observe and be part of that because of just staying in connection with everything else going on in the town. It's been so helpful that we will contact the Conservation Commission, contact Environmental Sustainability Group and contact the Town Engineer and let them know what we're up to. That's all, just really letting them know what we're up to and let them know that as a board, we may be moving towards a lake district or something that will help protect the lake from overdevelopment, preserve views and support open space from the pedestrian side, keep safe the people enjoying the lake and control pollution. Yes?
Yes, I second that.
Okay. I ran out of paper taking notes, so I'm just going to have to watch the video after, but yeah, okay. Thank you. This is, um, I know I mentioned this last week in our meeting, Joanne and Erin and mentioned it in the meeting too. This is, this is really where I think our board finds purpose. As much as the subdivisions and A and R is in different things that we really have a handle on and we can do, I really think this is how our planning board can have a purpose, okay? We have an agenda. Let's see.
The night is young.
Well, actually, for an hour and twenty minutes, an hour and a half discussion, that was really fruitful.
So are we going to discuss this at the next meeting?
Yes.
We'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Right, and when we, we have three weeks and when it's time to do the draft, I think Joanne and I will have a better idea of what that will be. And the board can have some input too, because we're going to be sending them out something. But yes, board discussion. Annual town report from our board. Erin, I have to apologize. I, I, I haven't looked at it as closely as I should have. But do you want to speak about it?
All right, I don't even know if this was ever brought to your attention before and now I feel weird because it was supposed to be due last week. So every year, the town does like a annual, annual town report of every department and I think Paul wrote it every year. And I kind of stepped in November and kind of went back through meeting notes and put together what I thought was a town report for the, uh, planning board. And I sent to Bill just to confirm that everything was okay and if I was missing anything or if she had added anything. And that's where we're at and, you know, I don't know. Really before it was just A and R plans, preliminary plans, every sort of plan and I don't know. Bill was kind of saying like, maybe we should add more, like the other work that we're doing, so I'll hand it over to you, Bill.
Um, yes, I'm quickly going through my email to see if I can find it.
So, yeah, it's just an overview of all the work that the planning board has done.
Okay, I don't want to take any more time on it, but the planning board report, okay.
I'm sure I can find it very quickly in my documents if you want.
I think I found it. I found it, yay.
I don't know if Paul ever consulted with you guys, which is fine if he didn't. I'm, he just signed off on you guys, which is great. It was just, like I said, overviews of like the A and R's, the preliminary, you know, everything else that you guys did and yeah. I don't know.
Yeah, usually we would, we would all see it, so, but I'm, I'm sure it's, it's just a formality. Paul did set up a, a pretty good format, so.
Yeah, no, I just followed his format. But then again, there's some stuff that I couldn't find because he left in between the time.
Right, so thanks, I did find and I believe this is the latest one and we looked at a couple of the bigger projects that we did this year, like twenty twenty, sorry. Allovis Ave, Glendale, Osapi, public hearing for Glendale, Wildwood, Ten Mansion Road, that was one that we wanted to add to it. That was a pretty big deal as far as the, the planning board and the town and CBA. Excuse me. And, and then just the different zoning map changes, thinking of, you know, what happened through there, right? Yeah, I can't find the March twenty-fourth notes either. And then the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, there was also want to note in here too, that for most of twenty twenty, we were a three-person board. And I also wanted to note the passing of Christopher Fowler.
Which I'm sorry, I haven't added.
That's okay. I know there were a couple of things that would be good to add in there that just because it is the Town of Wakefield Annual Report, I think it's just a good thing to have and and understand and the new members that we did take on, two new members of the board and it's been so helpful. It, it really has been, the, the level of stress, even though it's been a crazy twenty twenty, having Megan and Joanne on the board has really helped. So I, I, I think without dragging it on, I, I, if, if the board is without dragging it on, I, I, if, if the board is comfortable with Erin and I working on this to get it submitted, and then we bring what is being submitted in front of the board, um, at the next meeting, if that's fine to move forward with that, if the board agrees.
Um, if you could send a, a draft out so we could all look at it, that would be.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I know, for sure. Um, you know, I kind of lost track of time, um, of when it, this all, it was supposed to be due last week to be put in the book, but, um, I got a extension of when it could be finished, so I think that should be okay. So let me just double check, but I don't see that being a problem.
All right, and if, if you need to submit it, it's no big deal either, so I, you, I understand you're pretty overworked right now too, so.
Yeah.
No, no, it's all good. No, I actually enjoy it because it actually, um, made me like kind of pick up on projects that you guys are still talking about. It was actually very helpful, so.
So just to reiterate, um, Erin and I will work on it and a draft will go out to the board before it's submitted, if that's possible. Okay. Excellent. Thanks. And the idea of looking at the draft, Matt, Joanne, Megan, just to make sure that if there's something in there wording wise, because we've looked at it maybe too much, if you see something that should be dramatically changed or if there's like a sequential order that looks like it should, it would make more sense. I mean, it's not super, I don't know, have you ever read this? So it is really cool. I, I don't know.
Yeah, it's actually cool when you read it.
All right. Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
The, um, we close, I'm trying to open, get that ready. Items not anticipated by the chair. I do have a list, but I'll go through it quick and then we can open up to any members that have any comments. Um, we did receive two letters this, in the last week from people from the town. We, we received a letter and, and this is from Sue Mitchell, Sue and Mark Mitchell of Crescent Commons Development and their, uh, meaning in their subject was Crescent Commons Development. That's the forty-four to forty-eight Crescent Street, the development that's been in front of the zoning board of appeals and they really, um, they're really concerned about it. And I did respond back to them and, and let them know, you know, thanks for your message. We understand the sensitivity of this project and have been following it through the town council and Board of Appeals I have. And I don't know if anybody else on the board has, but I'm really curious of how this is gonna work out. Um, so if anybody is interested, uh, the ZBA recordings, if you want to look at those to see, to catch up on it. Um, then I believe the ZBA also has a special committee doing some stuff too, and I think it might be about this. Um, I haven't caught up on that. But I also let them know that our board does not have any ruling authority in the debt, on the density or other zoning related regulations pertaining to this project, so. And I told them I would share this letter. Uh, we also received the letter from Colin and Katie Colaga. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly. They're also in that area on Crescent Hill and same thing, their, their whole point of being in Wakefield was because they cherish their quiet dead-end street and how close they are to the town center. So they're, they're just so concerned about this and, um, they wrote a nice letter and I responded to them in a similar way. I just wanted to let you know because I want the board to be aware what comes in on the planning board email and I respond to it. If it is something that, um, I feel the board needs to be together and respond to, I don't want to speak for the board, but these are the type of messages I do send back. Um, if anybody has any comments or concerns about that, please let me know and, um, I won't respond to them until our board takes a look at them. I think that's, that's that part.
Is the letter from the Mitchells, is that the same one that was in the paper?
It, it possibly is. Um, Sue Mitchell also spoke last night at the town council meeting during the public, um, yeah. And I know you might not always get to watch the meetings live, but the town council meeting night was, last night was really good, which brings up my next, um, items not anticipated. Um, please take a look at the town council meeting from last night. Their first item of business they got into was about the stretch code. And Erin, of course, if you want to add anything, but it was really informative. They had, um, people from the state that take care of this across the whole state with so much experience. And I have to say, I watched this presentation maybe eight years ago and this was so much easier to understand. It was so clear with Wakefield moving to a stretch code and what that means. And Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would go, this is going to be an article at town meeting? Is that how it's adopted? How is it?
Yes, it's, um, gonna be an article at town meeting. It's all only new, uh, commercial and residential, no renovations or anything like that.
Yep, and that is such an important piece. It's not, and, and there's two different ways and in my experience, when you do a res check or a comp check, meaning the energy code part of your permit set of drawings that go out, when I do a res check, it's completely online and the rest check is either prescriptive or done in a different way. And this is, this is the different way. This is really to the energy code and really making sure it follows, um, standards to help, um, help save energy is the point. Okay. Um, Vision twenty thirty, we're meeting again tomorrow night to plan the next, um, session and all, so it's going well. So please push the survey if you get a chance. I think that's all I'm mentioning again. Um, the ZBA, the letter that we wrote, um, for the property on water in, um, Wakefield Ave. Yeah, that sidewalk is there. And I know Matt and I chuckled about it because if you look at one other view and I, I went by the next day um, and I'm like, oh, there is a sidewalk there, so don't always believe the Google map. Um, but as Matt was laughing, it's like if you kind of look from another angle, it shows it, so it's funny. But I sat on Wakefield Ave for a little bit and looked to see what was going on and understood. And the ZBA read our letter as well as I believe one from the fire chief and from the DPW because, um, they were also about safety concerns. Um, the ZBA, I think, did an awesome job at pushing back on the property owner and the architect to make sure that this property fits into the neighborhood, the density, the scale, the design, everything. So it was a really nice part of the ZBA meeting and it's, if you're gonna look back at the video, it was after ten o'clock at night. It was pretty late on last, the last meeting. Um, I have something else to, to share and I know I did, um, call each of you individually. Um, Bill, uh, Bill Demore is resigning from the board. He sent me a message and I reached out to each of you to let you know. Um, he still hasn't set his official message to Betsy, Town Clerk, which will then, just to share this, it triggers, um, a message to Steve Mayo, which then he brings it up at town council and town council puts the, um, the word out that we're looking for applicants for a position. And then once those applicants come in, we get to review them. We have a joint meeting with town council and we give them our recommendation. That's how that all works. If anybody has any questions, that's fine, but I think we covered that. The last one I have tonight is, is it's something that's bothering me a lot and it's about the developments that are going on at Foundry and Harvard Mills. And I've been trying to stay up with what's going on, but I feel that, um, there was an opportunity missed and I'm not sure how, and I don't want to make excuses, but at Harvard Mills, this is, this is located in the multi-use overlay. And I believe that's how their permit went through to complete this design that's being built. And I'm not against it, I'm not for it. My problem with it is, is that if it is in the multi-use overlay, which it is, and this industrial zoned area is allowing a multi-family residence to go in, multi-use overlay, that our board should have been the special permit approval board. And we were not. And maybe this is because we missed it because we were a three-person board for so long through this process that we just didn't have the bandwidth to notice that it was happening. Um, but Matt, and I know you and I haven't talked about this and I don't know how, if this is true, it really pisses me off because this should have come in front of our board for approval for a special permit because that's what the multi-use overlay district was set up to, to come to the planning board. And I don't know how you all feel about that, but I'm, I'm not happy.
We, uh, that was changed a few years ago, taken out of our hands, so.
Not with the multi-use overlay, it's not. In the multi-use overlay, which was just put in, was that twenty? When did we work on that? I can't remember now. Twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen? And I read through it and it, I read, I caught up with it again and, and really tried to read through. And I know it, it's just a super upsetting if this is, this wasn't put in front of us. And I know the town has gone through and I'm not making excuses. We have a different building inspector, we have different, lots of things going on. And I just think it was missed that our board should have been the board that approved the special permit on this.
That written into the, the zoning dialogue for that? That the planning board could do that? I mean, why do you think that?
Because we wrote it. We wrote the
The mixed use?
The multi-use with, with Paul Revis and it went to town meeting and it was approved by two-thirds because this was something that, um, was gonna help and it was supposed to come to the planning board. And I, and Matt, and I'm just, I'm like beside myself about this.
Um, I, I still think that we, that had been changed and all put in the, in the hands of the zoning, so I'd have to go back and take a look myself.
I know, I'm looking, and it's probably getting too late, but the mixed use overlay district. There's a special overlay district to distinguish locations suitable for mixed residential and business uses and to regulate such use mixtures within them. Within such a district, the provisions of the district, it, I know it overlays shall continue in full force except as provided in one ninety ninety-four mixed use development. So in this, the procedure, the special per, you know what, let me share it because I just don't want to have to read this all. Can you see the screen?
Yep.
Okay. I gotta move your faces over to the left, sorry. Special permit granting authority, mixed use development. Planning board must find developers and met all the general requirements. Pre-application, regular business meeting of the planning board. Applications, special permit for mixed use shall be accompanied by the following. And I'm not trying to knock the ZBA on this, I'm just, why wasn't this in front of us? Not saying it would have changed the project drastically, but I don't know.
I know.
I'm not blaming, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just, again, we need to learn from this. That if, and Matt, I was under the same impression to your comment that our planning board did not have authority.
So real quick, um, so mixed use, see how they sell the office space, you're talking about Harvard Mills, right?
Yes, Harvard Mills. Um, I could bring up the map, the overlay district actually ends and doesn't include the, the other building down, Foundry.
So just to clarify, so sixty-two Foundry, right, sixty-two, sixty-nine Foundry? That's just all multifamily. You guys have no?
Correct, it's not in the multi-use district. The map actually stops around Harvard Mills. I know I spent too much time looking at it in the last week, but.
I think this is a bigger conversation because I think something else was brought up that within twenty-five hundred square feet of, um, the MVTA stop that you could mix use. Um, so. Yeah, yeah, that's something to talk about another time.
It is, but you bring up the point, so I just want to, um, share that map that.
Yeah, that'd be good to see the map again.
Supplemental. So, oh, gotta move your faces over to the right again. Um, this is, so this is the mixed use overlay district. So if I zoom in real close, you can see North Ave, you can see Foundry, you can see Maple Street. So it's not the construction that's been here. It's not the new proposed stuff, it's Foundry. Here's the parking garage, here's Albion, here's Harvard Mills. I've been learning a lot more about it, about the history of Harvard Mills and had to correct myself on the Wakefield page too, because I misspoke, but it's just, um, I'm really concerned and I, I feel like that's the, it, it's, this is not a radius when I look at this map.
No, it's not.
That's zone for industrial. And now it's in mixed use and it should have come to our board. And again, doesn't mean the project would have changed much or, we just don't know. Not saying the ZBA did a bad job either, just.
Is there another zone that's the two thousand feet from the, the rail or is this the only one?
When we were working on this, and Matt can help me remember too, I remember Paul presenting these maps with the radius, a certain footage from the train stop was really, and, and in that radius, it would encompass what zones and it was industrial and it was business. It didn't touch residential. So the industrial and, but why not these? How come they're not in it? I'm not sure.
Yeah, because they're close to the rail.
Industrial.
Can I follow up with you on that?
Please.
Next meeting or, you know, one of you, two of you. Yep.
Thanks, Erin.
You're welcome.
I really didn't mean to, um, upset you with that, Bill, because I didn't know all that history. I, I just, you know, every, I drive by there all the time and I, uh, I keep thinking, wow, looks like there's another floor going up there.
Yep, agreed. So, um, that's what I have for things not anticipated. If anybody has anything else, um, there was a lot in there from the stretch code to the Vision twenty thirty ZBA letter. Um, letters that came in email-wise, Bill's resignation and the Foundry, um, Harvard Mills project. Matt, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything else.
Joanne?
Nope.
Megan?
No.
Okay. Erin and Jonathan, anything?
Very, very good discussion. Um, I'll follow up with you on the work footage, but also it's, it goes back to that conversation we lost, uh, two weeks ago about the being close to a transit station. Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing, nothing on my end, just to say a really great discussion and it, it's exciting to see. Um, you know, it's exciting to see the planning board talking sort of proactively about, um, you know, what you want to do from a, from a zoning perspective. You know, really, really interesting discussion and, and I think it's great to see you taking such a, a forward-looking approach to what you're doing.
Thanks, Jonathan. And, um, I have to say, I really appreciate your being here and, um, your comments. They really help. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Alright.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the Tuesday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one meeting of the planning board.
And I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Megan, I, you said Matt, and yep, Joanne? Thank you. Erin? Nope, sorry. Just kidding. All right, I also agree with adjourning. Thank you so much for spending this time. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, have a nice night.
Meeting adjourned.